All right, well, welcome everyone to our city council meeting for December 5th. I know this agenda has a lot of items that many of you are likely passionate about, so great to have you all here and civically engaged this evening. A couple announcements before we start with our public comment. We still have staff members joining virtually as well as people from our community who'd like to speak. So I continue to sort of navigate back and forth between my computer and who's here in the audience, so just give me a little grace as I toggle back and forth. And we do take breaks every 90 to 120 minutes between items. With that, we will begin our meeting with open comment period. So this is an opportunity from anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item that we will not be having a public hearing on later in the agenda. So many people have signed up for a specific item on the public hearing agenda tonight. So those of you who would like to speak on an issue that's not one of those items has the opportunity to speak for up to four minutes, and then we allow for a total of up to 20 minutes for comment. So because it is a time limited opportunity, we want to make sure you keep your comments moving along, be as concise as possible. Your comments are directed at me as council president. If you have any handouts, please give them to our clerk, she's sitting over here, Clerk Giesler, and she will distribute them around to council. We welcome comments and whatever issues you'd like to comment on related to city, what concerns you around city policy, but we do expect that you deliver them and participate respectfully in our council chambers. I will be starting with those who have signed up in person, and then I will be going back and forth between those who have their hand raised online. So with that, I would invite Dave Reichert up. And please introduce yourself, and we'll be keeping track of time in a couple different We have a stoplight system here and a timer up on the wall, and just know that I will cut you off if you're being posted.
That's just fine.
Go ahead.
Council President Carlson, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Dave Reichert, I'm on the City Energy Commission. Just informational heads up, just to make you aware of things that are going on. First, I want to thank you all for passing the updated greenhouse gas reduction goals earlier this year, brings us in line with the international goals. As you know, that's a large task. We've really got to do gas emission reductions in three main areas. First would be electricity production, which fortunately for us, RPU has well in hand. Their 2030 plan sets us on a great route, so that's a relatively easy one for Rochester. Next one's transportation, the cars and the trucks that are out on the road. That's a much more difficult one because everybody owns one, right? It's not easily controlled. The best Rochester can do, we think, on the commission is we can encourage those, but we can't afford rebates and such, so we're not going to buy cars and trucks for people. But making EV chargers available is an important thing to do. So any place we can do that down the road is great. Third area is a very hard one, buildings and processes, the things that take place inside a building. So this could be your house, could be the local dry cleaner, right? All those things that take place in the buildings, the buildings are heated, cooled, and some of the processes use heat. So those are emission sources. And that's an area where the city government has probably the most leverage, because those things are located here. They aren't made in Detroit or Japan or someplace and brought here. That's stuff that's going on right here. And a lot of the people that own those places or live in them as renters or homeowners are voters in our community, people in the room, right? So those are, that's really what I want to pay attention to tonight. Good news is the federal government's brought out a lot of legislation that can help us with this. The Infrastructure Act and now the Inflation Reduction Act, both contain monies aimed at climate change preparation. And there are, it comes out in a multitude of ways, unfortunately, it's pretty confusing. I'm sure you've all seen mailings on this and pie charts with, you know, this secretary gets this much and it's this kind of money. So it's confusing, but it's out there. And what we need to do, I believe, what the commission believes, is we need to optimize those benefits for Rochester. So we need to really study this and make sure that we make use of what is available. Now, city government can do that for itself, right? You can have electric vehicles on by city government, but what we really need to pay attention to are the, those small consumers that I talked about before. It's a large opportunity to improve the efficiency of our homes and then move against those greenhouse gas emissions that we've got targets for. So what we're contemplating, the Energy Commission, and which staff is working on, is to first have a campaign that increases the awareness of the issues, and then, most importantly, increase the knowledge of what's possible and what funding might be applicable. And that's, you know, I'm thinking like school bonding referendum, you know, you've really got to get things, get people's attention on this, because there's money laying there to be had, and we should make sure we use our share. So once you've got the people's awareness and some knowledge out there, then you have to match them up with funding sources. On the back of the handout that I gave out is one website. It's, I'm not plugging these people, but Rewiring America has a nice website that says, if you've got this income and you live in this zip code, here's the things that might be available to you. It's a long list, and when you press "Learn More About This," it's even longer list. So there's a lot of education that's needed. And then ultimately, we need to connect the community to suppliers. The suppliers also are going to need some education, they need to be prepped for all this. So that's what we're looking for. We're trying to move the community forward by making awareness rise, bringing technical knowledge to it, and applying the funding as best we can. That's it. City staff says they'll come forward in January or February with a study session and bring you more news about this. Thank you much.
All right, is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Use the raise hand function or press star nine? Again, the raise hand function or press star nine? Seeing no one, we'll move on to Casey McGregor. Please introduce yourself, and you have four minutes.
Good evening, council. Casey McGregor. Today I'm going to talk about money, taxes, and I'm going to give you a little job performance review. You all know that voters are your bosses, not the city. You sit in those chairs because people went to a voting booth, filled out that little bubble next to your name. Do you know how in awe that is, that people value enough to give you their voice, to stamp approval for you, to stand up and work for them? Do you know how amazing that is? Have you forgotten that? We're approaching the end of 2022, and heading into the new year, voters would like to see a few changes from this council. Change number one, stop giving the power to the city administrator. This is not what the voters want. The voters have the power, sorry, we voted you to have the power as a collective council. The voters do not get a say in this city administrator. The voters get no say in that job performance. It is the city's council's job, is not the city council's job to give away the power of this council. Number two, I disagree with Mr. Spindler Craig. At the end of council, last council, he praised the council for not polling items. As a voter, I think this is horrible advice. This is your job to poll items and discuss it here on council floor. You work for the voter, not the city. How as I, as a voter, do I get more information if you don't have that discussion here? Have you ever looked at the city and said, well, maybe you should write smaller agendas? Maybe thousand-page packets aren't a good idea? Maybe it's the city's fault, not the council's fault? Number three, I look at the job of a councilman as the voice between voters and the city. Sometimes the city should win, sometimes the voters should win, and I'm not seeing any wins for the voters. I'm seeing us spending more. Does the council ever say no to the city? Do you ever just tell them to go pound sand? Every dollar this council spends comes from somebody working for it. You realize you're not playing with monopoly money, right? This money comes off of our bodies. Every tax dollar I send in, I poured my body work into that dollar. As I age, this money is getting harder to work for physically, becoming more challenging. I would like to see my money respected better. Number four, examples of money being mishandled are in today's agenda, F9, F14, and F16. What do you think the voters want? Do you think the voters want to spend this? Why would you approve a no limit? This is wasteful and disgusting. Number five, you realize there are only two types of people that stand here at this microphone. One is your voter, and the second person is a salesman, and they're always trying to sell you their idea. I think you have to be careful with what they're selling. Number six, DMC and DMC money comes from the voters and the taxpayers. Mr. Sieb stood here before council and approving his budget and told you he has a key and you have a key, and you unlock that money together. Then he said it's not his job to host the town hall for the voters, it's yours. And you didn't host a town hall. You blindly approved the budget without hearing from your voters. You stole their voices in that moment, and that can never happen again. One example of wasted money, climate accommodating structures. The gentleman that stood here, I don't remember his name, said, "They don't heat, they don't cool. They don't heat, they don't cool. They're two giant built-in umbrellas for 1.4 million." What voter wanted to spend that kind of money on two giant built-in umbrellas? Art is another thing. Art should be donated or fundraised for.
20 seconds left.
Is the subject where, sorry, my voice is dragging on. Art should be fundraised for, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Use the raise hand function or press star nine? Seeing no one, we'll move on to Bruce Struth.
I'm going to wait until G3.
John Kriesel, come on up.
I'll do the same. I'll speak at the hearings.
Okay.
Thank you. Give my time to somebody else.
I think you are signed up for the, all right, I'll make sure you're both signed up. Gail Madison.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me stand up here and speak. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Thanks. I just want to mention that I did leave a message a couple of times to my city council member who has not returned my calls. I know I can be confrontational and not Minnesota nice. I come from Los Angeles and sometimes just get tired of a little bit of the woke mentality. And the crime that I'm seeing increased here, which is what I want to discuss with my council member. So really, two points that I wanted to make tonight. One is the crime, and the other is about government surveillance of the citizens here. When I talk about the crime, I want to piggyback a little bit the last time I spoke up here regarding my experience at the whatever Planned Parenthood fundraiser thing or whatever it was, where I was pushed around and shoved around and then even asked CERT. This is the topic that I really want to drive into is, who is CERT? Community Engagement Response Team. Co-op being the theme and name, Community Emergency Response Team. How many are there? How are they paid? What is their training? Do they take an oath to the sheriff or to uphold the constitution? When I was pushed around, which was assault, I asked CERT, the person that was doing it, law enforcement that was looking for her. I asked them, I said, "Could you please get her name?" They said, "No, we don't have the authority to do so." Which begs the question, what authority do they have? How are they bonded? You know, what is the liability that our community faces when something goes wrong? Just like a quasi-military police force, isn't this a little vigilante? It just begs the questions, a lot of legalities behind it, and who they are and why should I? Many of them, very nice to speak to, some of them I spoke to, they were very cordial, but at my understanding, it's questionable, some of their backgrounds, and what is my obligation as a citizen to respond to direction from them? I don't think that they're really trained as police officer, they're pseudo-police officer, or are they under the jurisdiction of RPD? Do they manage them? The thing, next thing I want to talk about is, I have handouts that tie to it, is Rochester government surveillance, surveillance on common residents. We have a group called Zen City, and I sent in FOIA requests trying to find out what sort of data they're pulling on us as citizens. Was it social media? What do you have on me? Conveniently, could get nothing back and no feedback. It's disturbing to me that my Fourth Amendment and everybody else, this spans all across conservative, liberal, whatever, everybody as Americans should be concerned about our government surveilling us, and we paid for that. I have a handout of the signature that Kim Norton signed on November 10th, 2021, that we paid $24,000 for Zen City to surveil us. What did we gain out of that? And when I talk about cutting back crime, what kind of crime did it cut back? Because in my neighborhood, which I wanted to talk to my city council member who does not return my phone calls, is that we just had six blocks away from my house, someone kicked on the door of a home and stole money. And who knows what it would have been like had that person been at home? So yes, I was voicing concerns about the crime. But back to the Zen City, I had another handout with emails between Michael Spindler Craig and others, and someone, one of them says, "Someone likely believes law enforcement is actively tracking her on social media. She might be right, but not sure there's anything improper, and it doesn't have anything to do with Polk or Zen City. I'm not sure what tools RPD may use regarding social media tracking with anything." So if our legal counsel doesn't know what's tracking, then who does? And how come I can't get a FOIA request answered on what was pulled on us as our common citizen? This should be concern for everybody and all Americans in this room. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody joining virtually who would like to speak? Use the raise hand function or press star nine? All right. Bryce Borgshotz? Okay.
Good evening, president, board members. Joe Christensen, born and raised in Rochester, Minnesota. I'm not happy with the changes that are going on in my hometown. I'm largely here to talk about G3, which is the 6.5% property tax increase.
But we'll hold on that, which you're signed up for later.
Okay. All right. But optics are important, and maybe sometimes people can't connect the dots between increased spending, maybe it's coming from capital improvement projects, whether it's the improvements downtown or the north Broadway transportation corridor. And so I guess from my perspective, I'm just not seeing a concerted effort in order to get the budget in balance, you know? Maybe the property taxes, I'll address that later, but the, that's probably the main thing. We got a lot of other new properties that are popping up all over the place, bringing in a lot of revenue. We should actually see the property taxes go down if all of these new buildings, residential properties are bringing in revenue. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you later in the meeting. All right, is there anyone else who did not sign up who would like to speak? All right, seeing no one, final call. We will close open comment and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Giesler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keane.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton is absent.
Thank you. All right, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zolms.
Thank you, council president, council members, members of the public. We always start off the city administrator report with a reminder of our customer service principles of respect, integrity, safety, and excellence. As we are moving to the end of the year, I have some teammate recognition that I wanted to make, and we actually have, like the rest of the world, been seeing a fair amount of turnover, and although we do keep people for quite a long time, we also have a fair number of retirements. So the next two slides represent our new teammates, and these are filling vacancies that have occurred. You can see it's across the board, and last time we did this, we saw quite a number of police officers, so we were happy to be able to attract them. We have some firefighters, inspectors, folks from across the community. This slide and the next slide represent 35 folks that we were fortunate to have join us. They have great experience and qualifications, and I know that they will rise to those customer service principles, just like our existing teammates. We do keep people for a long time in the city, and they're very committed to the city, and so I just wanted to honor five of our retirees who are leaving service or have left service. So Al Horstman has been with us for 42 years before retiring as an engineering technician in Public Works. Susan Hansen has been with the library for 38 years until her retirement as a librarian one. Linda Bly had 35 years of service and retired as an IT analyst with Rochester Public Utilities. William McKay had 31 years of service and retired as a crew chief with Public Works. And then Mike Burns, who's seen many snow seasons with us, retired with 29 years of service just before snow season started again as infrastructure maintenance manager. So all told, those five represent 175 years of service. And we do have quite a number of teammates that stay with us and are really dedicated to delivering for the community, so a big thank you to them. Here, you can see if I, my math is correct, we have folks spanning four decades, over 270 teammates, and a combined years of service with us of almost 6,000 years. So we have great people with great experience and talent that are bringing services to the community, and just always a thank you to them for delivering for us. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And the mayor is gone today, so no mayor's report. We'll move on to approving the order of the agenda. I have not been notified of any changes to the order of the agenda. Is there anything I missed?
Move approval. Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Motion carries. All right, on the consent agenda, councilmember Dennis, what would you like to do?
Yes, after the last meeting where it was made clear that it's not good to poll consent agenda items after 1:00 PM, I listened to the resident who came here in open comment and spoke about the DMC, the $1.2 million expenditure. And so I polled the consent agenda item at the time of the meeting, which we have every right to do as council. Hearing Casey McGregor speak about this as well, I feel it's important that council has the ability to listen to residents who come speaking at open comment and residents who connect to council right before the meeting with an issue or information that's relevant. And so I, to counteract the issue that had occurred, I polled proactively all the consent agenda items, just in case anyone had an issue. And I did hear a few concerns, so I would like to still poll F9, F12, and F14. I believe there was one more, but I'll just poll those three, and then I withdraw my request to poll the remainder of the consent agenda items. Thank you.
Okay, I'd invite a motion then to approve and block F1 through 8, F10 and 11, F13, F15 through 16.
Second, can you be in?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So those items, F9, 12, and 14, will happen after reports and recommendations later in the agenda. With that, we will get started on our public hearings. I always take a moment to go over our process for public hearings so everybody is clear, because it's a little bit back and forth. We provide an opportunity for our staff to give an introduction on each item. Then we invite the applicant or representative of the applicant up to present for up to 10 minutes. I then open the public hearing, so anyone from the public who would like to comment has up to five minutes to come speak to council. Then close the public hearing, and the applicant has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes. And then my council colleagues can ask any clarifying questions of the applicant or of staff before we move on to a motion discussion and vote. So we will go ahead and move into item G1, and this is the certification for collection with taxes for unpaid administrative citation for weed removal. And Kelly Peterson?
Actually, Dylan will be introducing it.
Dylan? Is he online?
No, he's online.
Okay. Sorry about that, Dylan.
No worries. Good afternoon, president and members of the council. These are, I'll speak to these first two public hearings, G1 and G2. These are the properties that appealed at the previous hearings that we held earlier in November. As you can see in the packet, there are memos from the community development and Parks and Rec and Public Works team as to what we're recommending, and so, you know, we're just bringing it back for additional questions or if you choose to move forward with the suggestions as identified in the packet.
All right, thank you for that. So Clerk Giesler, just a quick point of clarification. With the continued public hearing, do we just go ahead and open it back up only for those who submitted an appeal?
Council president, council members. That's correct. I would just state that the public hearing is open for any of the parcels that were held over for appeal.
Thank you for clarifying. All right, so we will open the public hearing for any of the parcels that remain open. Anyone who would like to speak, who has a parcel that is listed on this item G1? Just double-check my notes. Looks like we do not have anyone signed up. Last call. All right, we will close the public hearing, and any questions from my colleagues? Or a motion?
Move approvals, adopting a resolution, levying the continued parcels from the November 14th meeting? Second.
All right, councilmember Keane?
No, I think the city's staff is not in investigation and has come to the right adjudication.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Dombrowski, back to you.
Yeah, and this second one is again a continuation of the hearing that was held in November. This one's for weed rubbish, tree removal, and sidewalk replacement and repair. And again, we have teammates here that would be available to answer any questions from the different departments.
All right, thank you. So we will open the public hearing to anyone who has a parcel listed on item G2. Just double-check my notes that I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone joining virtually who was planning to speak for item G2? Use the raise hand function or press star nine? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing for item G2 and invite any questions from my colleagues? Or a motion?
I'll move again to adopt a resolution levying the continued parcels from the November 14th.
All right, any discussion?
Just one clarification, or not clarification, but just comment. The majority of these fines are fees that the city paid to vendors and are being reimbursed. There is an administrative fine in here, but the majority of the expense is true expense. It's not the city coming up with arbitrary numbers.
Yes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item G3, which is the adoption of the 2023 property tax levy, 2023 supplemental operating budget, and 2023 through 2027 supplemental capital improvement project budget. And I will turn it over to Administrator Zolms to start us off.
Thank you, council president, council members, members of the public. I just went over and asked the city clerk if she would be willing to share the presentation with us, and thank you, she's very fast. Thanks, Rachel. So I did just want to introduce this briefly. We've talked about this for a number of months as we've gone into the supplemental budget in our second year of review. We do look at the budget when we bring this forward for recommendation to the city council through the lens of the city vision, our organizational vision of being a vibrant, compassionate, innovative team, balancing the foundational principles that, as you can see, are sometimes in tension with each other between fiscal responsibility and social equity. Sometimes that creates some challenges in how we bring forward the recommended budget. Obviously, we always have your strategic priorities and action plan in mind, so we're looking at affordable living, economic vibrancy, and growth management, and considering quality services so that people can enjoy living or having a business here. As you can see on the next slide, there have been a number of different phases of this. Obviously, in the second year of review, we had a little bit more of a condensed process because all of the decision packages came forward in the 2023, oh my goodness, I'm in the 2023 year already, 2021, 2022 process. And so that 2023 year, really, we were making revisions primarily and trying to make sure that we were in alignment with the council's desire to limit the tax levy as much as possible. So the next slide is just another way of looking at the number of different times that this has come forward to the city council, either in study sessions or in the preliminary levy adoption. And then, of course, we're here on December 5th for the public hearing to receive feedback from the community. So why are we here this evening? Again, we're here to receive feedback about the city budget and the property tax levy. And then, you know, obviously, the increases in taxes are often a reflection of the property valuations that the county is required to keep within 5% of market value, and they do review residential value every four years. So a lot of the changes that folks see in their tax bill is the proportionate distribution of the property tax levy, the total dollar amount across the different properties. We did try to get ahead of this a bit this year, and we do have a YouTube video out on our social media that tries to explain, that's on the next slide, what, how the property tax is distributed. So the change in the property value, whether that's commercial or apartment or residential, really has a significant influence on how the tax levy is distributed across the different properties. So if a property didn't change in value, it's likely that it even could have likely that it even could have, um, seen a reduction, even if the city had a slight increase, um, in the tax levy, depending on how they proportionately change their assessed value in comparison to all of the rest of the properties. Um, so you can check that out. It's on our, um, social media, um, and on our website. We also just want to make sure that folks are available on the next slide of, our next few slides of the programs that are available. Obviously, on the homestead application deadline is December 15th, so that is quickly approaching. Um, there are limitations to, um, some of that homestead, um, exclusion. So, um, people need to look closely at that. Um, we have some handouts on the table for all of these in case people are interested. Um, we also, um, have other programs that are available on the next slide, um, refunds through the state of Minnesota for folks, um, either that are renters, um, of property. And so that comes through your income tax. And then on the next, uh, slide, you can see that there are the senior citizen property tax deferral opportunities. Um, and those are, um, things that folks can, uh, check out on the Department of Revenue website and determine whether or not they meet those income qualifications. Um, so here's just a number of different programs. And I would say that last program, targeting property tax refund program, is something that folks should check out if they saw an inordinate change in their tax amount, um, that is not income qualified. That is something that is, um, related to if you, um, saw a very large increase in your tax levy year over year. And so, um, you can go online and apply for that. There's a formula, um, and a fair, fairly easy paperwork, as paperwork goes, um, from the state to fill out. So those are just options for folks to check out, um, if they, um, have concerns about their tax bill and how to pay for that. Um, just a quick overview of the 22, 23 operating budget and primarily the 23 budget. Um, we are looking at a 600.9, $600.9 million budget. Um, I would just point out that a significant portion of that, about 38%, is actually Rochester Public Utilities. So your electric and water, um, that it totals, um, almost $228 million of that number. So that's capital, operations, and keeping you going 24/7 in clean water and making sure that you have electric service available. So those are not things that come from the property tax, but are primarily, um, user fees, um, and driven by that. Um, and then the remainder, about 373 million, is all of the other services that the city provides, police, fire, parks, library, et cetera. So that rolls up to a 6.85% increase in the levy. That's not the, that is not the tax rate increase. That is the year-over-year dollar amount change. So going to the $92 million, um, results in that percentage increase. And each property tax bill will have a different, um, increase based on the assessed value and how, um, the dollar amount is distributed across all properties in the city limits. Um, again, there's a small increase in the general rate for electric and for the general rate for water. And that is to continue to assure, um, proper operation and capital investment in those systems. No, no increases in parking ramp or transit rates are anticipated for 2023 in this budget. And, um, again, this is year two of the process. Um, you can see on the next slide, um, the different major revenue sources and the property tax, we talk about quite a bit. But you can see that 6.85% increase is really the difference between the $86.8 million in the adopted budget for 2022 and the 92.7 in the, um, recommended adopted budget for 2023. Um, the 92 million does include the $2 million of market value that was voter authorized for Parks and Recreation. So that $2 million is specific to Parks and Recreation projects. Um, then, as you can also see, we were absorbing a significant reduction in the local government aid that comes from the state of Minnesota. Um, and that has been something that we've been facing. Unfortunately, um, although there was a fix in the tax bill, the tax bill and legislative process did not make it to the finish line during the last legislative session. So, um, we did have to absorb that difference. And then you can see some of our larger, um, uh, revenue sources down at the bottom where the charges for service come into play, as well as the sewer, uh, utility charge and stormwater utility fee. Um, all told, that tax levy represents, um, just about 15% of the total revenue necessary for the city to operate. Um, so you can see on this next chart, just a different view of this, um, a pie chart that represents the different revenue sources necessary, um, to operate. Again, this is inclusive of Rochester Public Utilities, our electric and water utility. And there you can see the light blue, um, piece of the pie is the tax levy. And the dark blue is charges for service. So those are primarily going to be your, um, sewer, water, electric, um, indirect fees for service, um, for those types of operations. Um, and then some, the, the intergovernmental revenue is inclusive of the local government aid, which was reduced significantly this year. So just moving forward, um, again, we've mentioned this already. Um, so the next slide, um, talks about the 92.7 million in tax levy, um, for a, it's a total budget that is 600.9, $600.9 million. And so when you go to the next slide, you can see what that means for the actual property tax rate, which is the lowest that it has been, um, since 2012 and before this slide. So we have been really trying to mitigate the amount of costs that's going to the tax levy. That's been a challenge. And I would, um, say that that was a challenge that the council presented. And, um, I would commend you for also putting forward a significant amount of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that was for lost revenue in order to mitigate the tax levy and address the zero, um, levy increase that happened in 2020, um, so that we could continue to provide services. Um, the next slide actually shows a little bit, um, different visual of how tax bills adjust based on that proportionate share of the levy and how it spreads across different property value. So you can see in the middle column, if there is a property that was the median home value of $235, $236,000, and they didn't see an increase in their assessed valuation, they would actually see a decrease in their tax rate. And that's that proportionality that happens within, um, the tax classes and how that's distributed, which is established by state law. If someone saw the average increase in, um, in the assessed valuation, which is similar across all of southeast Minnesota, and they saw about a 15.7% increase in their assessed valuation, then their, um, combined tax would have gone up 9.2%. So they're absorbing more of the tax levy adjustment than properties that went up, uh, a smaller amount of assessed valuation. Um, then you can see, um, when you look at the actual assessments by property class, um, there was a distribution, a, a larger distribution that, um, is coming from, uh, residential than, uh, commercial. So that's shifting some of how the, the distribution is happening of the levy. Um, and you can see the taxable market value overall went up about 13%. The taxable tax capacity, that's with all of the different formulas applied, went up about 15%. And you can see how, um, the different rates when they get applied, that the, the value of commercial property is taxed at a higher rate in Minnesota. So that light blue, even though it's, um, less value, is actually, the taxable share is larger than their, um, than their market value. And that's based on the tax classification. And then finally, the, um, property tax distribution for services that the city provides. You can see that the general fund receives a significant amount of property tax. Um, that is where police and fire services are, 24/7 service, that's very people-centric, so significant amount of salary there. Um, then, um, you see, um, a much smaller pieces of the pie between Parks and Recreation, the capital improvement program, which does not include DMC projects, um, Rochester Public Library, and then, um, some of our internal debt, and a very small portion that goes to the airport, but comes back to the city in, um, revenue sharing to fund their capital improvement program. Another way of looking at that is, um, the fund reliance on tax levy. Um, the library is very reliant on, on the tax levy based on the type of service they provide. They don't charge for services. Parks and Recreation does have some charges for service, but still very reliant on the tax levy. And of course, that, there was the $2 million that was voter authorized. And then moving down through the general fund, um, and the other areas. And again, you can see that, um, destination medical center capital projects do not receive any tax levy. And then just again, one more way of looking at this, when you look at the general fund, which was the largest piece of the pie that's supported by the general tax levy, 57% of those total dollars are going to support public safety functions, a very important function for the community. We don't charge when folks, um, call 911 for either fire or police service. We send someone and we know that's the expectation. Then Public Works, um, general government, which includes some community development and other, um, other operations. And then, um, another, um, other, we always have to have an other there. Um, and then just from a community benchmarking perspective, um, we did really, um, seek to keep the, the levy low, not only this year, but in prior years. Um, and you can see that, um, we were one of only two cities that had a zero levy in 2020. And so that's been creating some compression within our operation in order to be able to operate, um, outside of that pandemic model. And with the 2023 preliminary levy increase at 6.85%, um, we're, um, at the bottom of the tax levies. The average tax increase year over year in Minnesota for 2023 is actually 9.2%. So, um, we have been doing what we can to limit the amount that's going to the levy. Um, again, when you go to the next slide, based on population, a significant impact that we saw is that we received significantly less local government aid from the state of Minnesota when you compare to our comparison set. So we're down at $32 per capita that we're receiving. And the next lowest is Minneapolis at $175 per capita. So we're very reliant on our local property tax and all of our other local revenue sources in order to be able to provide service to the community. And, uh, capital improvement projects were mentioned. So just quickly, um, we do have a significant amount of capital in this budget. Um, 187 projects across 23 different categories totaling $213 million. This is inclusive of Rochester Public Utilities and some significant capital investment that's happening, um, in their system. Again, those are charges for service that come in your monthly bill. Um, and of course, um, when you look at the entire, um, picture of the 2023 through 2027, we always try to plan ahead with our capital improvement projects, um, to meet the lifecycle cost of those investments. Um, we have 265 projects scheduled across those 23 different categories of funding. Um, and then that totals about $717.5 million of investment that we would anticipate over the next four years as we move, um, as we move forward and continue to maintain critical infrastructure for the city. Um, so that was a very quick overview of a $600.9 million budget. But, um, our, again, main purpose for being here this evening is to conduct the public hearing, um, hopefully adopt the, um, 2023 supplemental operating budget, so that year two of the two-year budget, and then adopt the supplemental capital improvement plan budget. Of course, we don't really, um, proceed with many of those out-year projects, but they help us to continue to plan and design. And then, um, adopt the tax levy as well as, um, concur with the Rochester Public Utilities resolutions for their budget, for their electric utility and water utility, um, as well as to, um, concur with the rate adjustments that they have brought forward. Um, so with that, I...
All right. Close. Just a quick note to those who are standing. Um, we do have a few seats up in front if you would, if you would like to sit down. All right. Well, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Again, I'll go back and forth between who I have here signed up and who might be joining virtually. So I have Paula Harden signed up. There you are. Ms. Harden, go ahead, introduce yourself. And you have five minutes. I know it takes a second to unmute, but it looks like you are good.
Okay. Um, Paula Harden, disability rights activist. On the property tax levy, I spent hundreds of hours last year reviewing documents and reading them and providing them to you to no apparent effect. And, um, so I have like six main points I want to make. And the first one is if you do nothing else with property tax levy this year, would you please put it on the legislative agenda for next year to the state to allow Rochester as a city of the first order to do a program comparable to the state senior property tax deferral program, but for people with disabilities to be able to defer their taxes if, to prevent foreclosure of their homes, maybe jointly with city commissioners, who I know Sheila Kuskaten and Greg Wright are both interested in this area. And if you won't do it yourself, um, could you please consider doing that? Um, I want you to know that there are homestead exceptions, discounts, and there are, uh, blind and disabled discounts. The homestead discount for everybody is 1% of market valuation. And the disabled and blind and homestead discount adds an extra .45, which is around $350. And the, um, only applies to the first $50,000. And for able-bodied people, the 1% discount applies to the first $76,000. So disabled people are being discriminated against in the, um, when it comes to the value. And the net effect of this is that as market valuation goes up, the discount for people with disabilities decreases, which essentially costs us double the money. And we are living on fixed incomes and generally enforced poverty to be able to take advantage of some of the basic services like food stamps. So, um, I think that's important. And I also think there needs to be outreach to the many people who may not even know there is such a thing as a homestead. We all grew up with the stories of homesteads out in the West and whatnot. And I think there could be more, uh, education put towards that. And we are a city of the first order, so we have some leeway about what kind of programming we want to do. Um, let's see, where's my E? Okay. And the COLA, cost of living increase that, uh, we are given sometimes rarely exceeds 1% to 2%. Last year was an exception, but it did not exceed the amount of the property tax increase. And I'm not sure, this year's might increase beyond the property tax increase, but it really won't help because the more my market value of my property goes up, the lower I'm able to get that discount. Plus, that COLA increase put millions of people, including me, out of eligibility for food stamps. Now, the legislature changed that percentage to 200% of poverty, which I'm in. But otherwise, it's like 100% of poverty to qualify for Medicare or Medicaid, I mean. And so the choice becomes, you know, do I pay property tax or food or go ahead and get foreclosed on? And then I can't find another accessible home in this town because all of your housing plannings all involve affordability and none use the word accessible housing. And you're, the city of Rochester is not in compliance with HUD regulations for the Fair Housing Act of 1988. So it's very important. And I think that you understand that you, you have to provide money in the CIP to make sure that public facilities are accessible and the library is not and never will be in that location. The city provided $65 million for it in 2015 and 2016 and just walked away. So you need to consider that for the capital budget as well.
Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Casey McGregor.
Hello, Casey McGregor. Um, so just curious, did we add another human resource position? Are we traveling and training? Are you taking raises? Which furnace did you choose? Was it the bougie one? How, how many of you see your property tax increases on your statement? Acknowledge that it's there, but you're still set on auto payments. It'll just deduct and you're fine. You do realize that's not normal for everyone. If you want to maintain the income level, if I want to maintain the income level I'm at with the property tax increase. I have to work six extra hours for the year for this increase. Now, I am fortunate enough that I'm self-employed and I can pick up and work a Sunday and get my extra hours and make that extra money. What happens to people that can't? What happens to our seniors that are on fixed incomes? What happens to the youth? Will they ever be able to afford a home here? Um, next year, oh, sorry, I'm gonna skip that. I am fortunate in my industry. I talk to five to 20 people a day, and I get to have good personal conversations. And I'm asking my clients how they're doing. And money is tight right now. I had one client tell me that she and her husband have very good jobs, and they were having to tell their children no a lot for the first time because money is tight. The prices of groceries alone is hurting our community. Families that used to not struggle are struggling right now. You increasing the levy that puts more burden on your voters. Does the city have any contingency plans if prices of food and home heat go up too high? How will you help your community if prices of everything continue to raise? As councilman, you sit there with a great responsibility to your voter. You are the gatekeeper to their money. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? All right, is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak? Use the raise hand function or press star nine. Seeing no one, I will move on to Tom DeBoer. Please introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
My name is Tom DeBoer. I've been a resident in Rochester for over fifty years. Council President Carlson, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I have a little table that I put together. A lot of people know me and I tend to be a numbers person. Just share one interesting fact. I first started paying taxes in Rochester back in nineteen seventy-five. My total tax bill for the city, the school and the county was two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Today, my tax bill for the city of Rochester is two thousand three hundred and twelve. So we talk about inflation. What I'm going to share with you today is I'm just going to talk about three, three columns here on this table. Column H, I'm going to start with that. That's always a big swinger in our taxes, depending on what the assess evaluation of your property does. If I point out line one and line five, those are the years that by state law, the county has to reevaluate the values of our homes and that's what happens. One thing I've learned, I'm gonna talk about column E right now, you almost have to use a three-year rolling average when you evaluate your taxes, because if you look quickly over at column C, you can see what the changes do do. So what I have done in column E, I can look back and say the three-year average in 2021 was a two-point-six percent increase, three-year average prior to 2022 was three percent, and now the three-year average this year is one-point-four percent, e- even though my tax rate theoretically went up by three-point-seven percent. So, cost money living Rochester, we are a premier community as far as I'm concerned, and we do have to pay some of those things. Second part of this, I have three close personal friends that are in business and own large properties and multiple buildings. It's the other side of the spectrum there. The taxes that our businesses and large property owners pay are really difficult on them. And I know, I know, again, that's kind of a state mandate. I thank the people that are willing to reinvest in Rochester. Another reason that we can see things go up on our taxes tend to stay down is the literally hundreds of millions of dollars in new buildings and that hit our tax rolls every year. So we have to thank the people that are willing to invest in this fine city. The other thing I'd like to do is thank all the staff here for the efforts they put into the budget. When I retired from my professional career, I spent three years at RPU in the marketing department. I got to go through three budget cycles. It is an amazing process, I tell you. It's kind of like a marathon, right, Mr. Palmer? So I, I thank everybody for efforts there. I also want to give thanks to Rochester Public Utilities staff for their due diligence. They have had some right changes which are absolutely necessary. But again, I really think they've taken a hard look and they've tried to keep those rates down as best we can. So with that, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone joining virtually who would like to speak on item G three? Raise hand function or press star nine. Seeing no one, we'll move on to Bruce Struve. And please introduce yourself and you have five minutes and timers are-
Got it. Okay. Hi, I'm Bruce Struve. I'm the owner of Struve Paint and Decorating. My parents started the business seventy-five years ago. We're still in the same spot. We now sell paint, window treatments and wall coveries. The past few years have been way more difficult than they should have been. In the spring of 2021, the Broadway reconstruction project started. Over the years, we were told that the alleys and side streets would be done the first year. Then the plan was changed to the first, one side of the Broadway would be done so traffic could continue to use Broadway. In the end, the whole street was closed. Traffic barriers were set up in the north side of the Civic Center Drive so that access to our building was difficult. By August, Broadway was torn up in front of the store and was complete, completed by mid-September. During the, during this time, Fifth Street was also torn up. So for the middle of April twenty-one to the middle of September, access to our store was confusing. Our customers became fewer and fewer because of poor access and signage to our store. To make matters worse, Brick on Broadway was started in early 2022. This one hundred and eighty-unit apartment building was supposed to be completed by December, this, this month. That date has been changed to March. During this time, we have had limited access to the store because of the construction going on across the street from the store. Not only that, but limited parking for our customer. Then in the October of this year, Fifth Street was closed again to complete the sidewalks and other green spaces around the store. Our customers have, have become fewer and fewer because they can't figure out how to get to the store, much less finding a place to park when they come to our store. During this whole time, there's been only one lane access on Broadway and as of recently, one lane of Fifth Street, which often has been a two-way street even though there is only one lane. Yes, confusing to most people. When the Broadway Reconstruction Project started in 2017, we had several meetings about this and designs and revisions. The actual design came out different. It does look nice and safer with a few quirks. We were told that our assessment would, was to be on the running feet of our building, both Broadway and Fifth Street, and that the payments would be spread out over ten years, beginning April 2023. If we, if, if we are asking that due to the hardship that we are still under, that our payment not start until April 2024 rather than 2023, our property tax, like every other business, has been raised higher than it should be. So besides property taxes we're already paying, that we're already paying and we're paying the, the Broadway assessment. We should like to retire in the near future and lease our building to some young entrepreneur, but with the taxes and Broadway assessment, even this seems to be out of reach of many young people. There has to be a stop as to how high the taxes will be in Rochester. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anybody joining virtually, use the raise hand or star nine. Seeing no one, we'll move on to John Kreisel.
John Kreisel, Madam President, members of the council. I wasn't going to speak, but I have known Bruce. We were probably not baptized together because we both had different parents, but we went, went to confirmation class together and I've known Bruce all of my life, along with his parents. I would say regarding his parents and Bruce, their truths have been and continue to be true servants to this community. His family and himself continue to serve this community without asking for anything. It saddens me to think that as an aftermath of what the city council has approved as it relates to DMC, as it affects almost everyone from Stuartville to Orinoco, it has created a hardship for small businesses with storefronts. It saddens me to think that, that probably my business or Bruce's will find somebody else to take it over. It's just no longer possible. I know we end up saying that with our consultants, that our hands are tied with the state as it relates to the, the tools that we have to work with, with establishing taxes. I've joined and quit the same, the Chamber of Commerce, oh, probably three, four times. None of you would know Lloyd Welty, I don't think. I said to Lloyd a number of years ago, because my family along with, with Mr. Struve's family helped start the, the Chamber of Commerce. I said, Lloyd, the chamber needs to, and I think Kathleen Harrington also would support what I have to say, that the city of Rochester, or excuse me, the chamber and the city of Rochester needs to pay attention to the tools that are set at the state level as relates to establishing tax bases. I know when anybody opposes their tax increase, I've hired an attorney a couple of times and you get, you get placated, say, okay, this year we'll give you a break. But by the way, would you sell that property for that much? Or would you sell your, sell your property at all? I shouldn't have to be forced to sell my property because, because of the, if I don't want to, I want to stay here. Same as, same as Mr. Struve. So the point I want to make is the face is changing. All of you are in control, not DMC. Because, without talking about the two umbrellas, because that was in the works some time ago, I really appreciate, Molly, that, that, that discussion might be heard again. Because what are we getting in return for these expenditures? The heart of the city is no longer the heart of the city. I don't know where the heart of the city is. Maybe it's moved to West Circle Drive. I don't know. But for the moment, it is not downtown. The community has left downtown. And hopefully, we, we, I'm proud that people come here for medical care. That is what has turned our community into what it is, but we've lost our community downtown in the meantime. Thank you.
All right. Anybody joining virtually who would like to speak, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to Joe Christiansen.
Good evening, Council President, board members, Joe Christiansen. To augment what Mr. John Kreisel was saying is that I recall that the property taxes became a real burden way before COVID, kind of around the time that the DMC kind of started. And that was about the speculation of the value of the property. We kind of saw something similar happen out in Pine Island when they had this Elk Ridge. They had some concept drawings. And so the values went up, not based on what they're actually making, but what they perceive the value of that property would be in the future. And so right now, we have downtown Rochester is really hurting with the porch, Legends, two businesses, Newt's and Potbelly's. They closed, but they keep their, the locations outside of downtown open. And I would speculate that part of that has to do with the property taxes downtown. Downtown's hurting. I would like to see actually kind of a, a freeze on the spending of unnecessary projects. Manus is important. Potholes are dangerous. But you know, do we really need that roundabout? Do we really need some of these things that are looking nice, but is that actually going to bring business downtown? Bringing a business downtown would actually be less overhead costs, like lower property taxes, and they could make their prices more affordable to compete with West Circle Drive, if that makes any sense. Anyways, I think that's enough. Thank you.
All right, I don't have anybody else signed up. Was anybody else planning to speak on item G three? This is your opportunity, last call. All right, I will close the public comment here, excuse me, period for G three and invite any questions from my colleagues.
Questions or-
Sure.
Are we in questions?
Uh, questions before motion. Or motion.
I would make a motion to adopt the 2023 supplemental operating budget, the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement plan budget in items three through six listed in, under the action requested.
Second.
All right, thank you, council member campaign.
I'll yield the comments from my colleagues.
Council member Bransford.
One of the reasons why I didn't make the motion to approve is, not that I won't support it, but that I've heard from enough people who are in a lot of pain based on how much property taxes have increased for them, that my heart goes out. I got an email where someone's property taxes went up two hundred percent. And at first blush, I thought that had to be a mistake. It wasn't. But knowing what I know, so having experienced this from where you're sitting and from where I'm sitting, it's an interesting journey and it's a complex issue. There's a lot of moving parts here. And one of the things that I thought I would find when I was elected and sat in this seat was tons of fat all over the place. And that's really just not the case. Now, yes, do we have wasteful spending here and there? Yeah, absolutely, we do. But we also have a city to run and it's really, really difficult. I, I, it, it's tough. But what I would like to just say to everyone in this room is I feel your pain. I really do. Businesses are the lifeblood. I actually sort of appreciated the comments about DMC and what it's done to property values and I have a hard time arguing with that. But all in all, I think we just have to kind of move forward and be cognizant of some of the ideas that were floated in here about other tools that maybe we can use in the future to maybe move the needle a little bit. But that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bransford. Other comments? Ms. Dennis?
Okay, thank you. I'm incredibly humbled to be up here, giving voice to people who are struggling. I feel, I've mentioned this before, the number one employer in the city, largest employer, is Mayo, and the second largest is the school district. The, the incomes of those Mayo tend to be higher than average. And if you know anything about education, as I'm a teacher, when I was a special education para working full-time, sixteen thousand a year, most of my colleagues make under twenty thousand. So the second largest employer has up almost poverty wage, full-time drops. When I was listening to one of my very first DMC meetings, one of the slogans that they wanted to use for Mayo Clinic was, "In the age of virtual work, where you can work, you can have your job anywhere, right? You can have multi-million jobs on the east and west coast, anywhere in the nation. Wouldn't you want to live in the town that can save your life from a heart attack? Let's market Rochester, being the town where people with high incomes can come and save their lives." And I think rural Mayo Clinic, but what it has done to home prices and the burden for essential workers and hourly employees from the school district to across many people in Rochester, paycheck to paycheck struggling. I know council member Kurt Patrick and myself are part of that population with our AMIs. And I just, I just can't fathom that we wait to the end of this process when we're at the eleventh hour to have a public hearing. We should have had this public hearing when decisions and things could be really done. Now we are at this, we have to have a budget, right? And so I, I didn't, I should prepare things because, as, as you know, I kind of go all over the place. But, but I just, I, as good stewards of taxpayer money and, and as, as, you know, looking at how we align our goals and our limited resources to meet the priorities, I don't think we're doing that. I don't feel comfortable with this incredible increase in tax levy. I feel that things could have been done earlier on. I've watched other cities and departments come to the city council and lay out their budget and say, this is what we need, this is what we can cut back on. Myself and others are on the agency oversight committee where we, we have like one-two-five live and place, the large budgets come to the city and say, here's our spreadsheet, this is why we need money. We don't have that on the council. We rely on the city administrator and staff to do that, which I think they do a phenomenal job of navigating so many needs. But it's hard to understand and have that full knowledge of what we can do better. And I just, I think we have more opportunities to maximize our resources. And in the future, my hopes are that going forward, we can, we can have departments come and look at ways to be innovative and creative and ask the public, who, we have an incredible amount of knowledge in our city, on ways we can do things better. I'm a, I'm a supporter of training. I think we, we need more training so we can network and connect ideas. I, I believe we need to have representatives that, that are, can afford to be on council. As a school teacher, As a school teacher, you can't be a council member, right? Because you have to take off every Monday and Wednesday. So you need a wage so that schoolteachers and paras can run for office. So I do think there are things that we do need to spend money on for democracy and for, you know, just safety. But there are a lot of things that we can cut back on, and I won't go into details. I have seen it firsthand. I've challenged many departments on why cars are idling and we're using, you know, gas money, taxpayer money. Why are, you know, things that we, why don't we do competitive bidding? Why do we, you know, why do we, in some circumstances? I feel that we could do a lot more to shave down unneeded things in our budget. So I just, I don't, I can't support this incredible tax increase. It's too much for people who are struggling to barely stay in their homes because of the market values increasing, the small businesses, local businesses, moving out of town, out of downtown. So I don't have any solutions. I just feel very strongly that we need to, in the next budget cycle, have public hearings like this at the very beginning. And we need to have residents involved to, and the departments involved directly to the council so that, that we can bring it back to our constituents and get feedback early on. So I am not going to support this budget as it stands. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Keane, then Palmer.
Yeah, just a couple of quick statements here. Some of this reaction to the comments being made, but I think it should be clear to everyone that this budget does not belong to the staff and they're asking us to approve it. This budget belongs to the council, the council that throughout the year walks into these things about the police need to change the software and we approve it, or that there's roads that are being maintained at a 60% and we need to make that higher. We're making those decisions and those decisions are what drive the budget. So I don't perceive this as the staff coming to us and asking us to approve their budget. This is us driving how things are working, and that's what it ends up being. So I take responsibility for that. The other thing, again, I pay very close attention, and I know my peers do too, levy spending is the most important thing. Most of the things people bring up as wasteful in that are usually not levy spending. Take a look at the levy and how it's used. We try to highlight that, that this is our public safety, this is our general government, but it's also things like our library and parks. I sit back after my first term on, in council and think that I never would have expected so much emotion and so much things about parks and how important parks are to people. And I would imagine it's one of these things that 30% of the populace thinks we don't spend enough and 70% thinks we're out of control. And that's the kind of way we're dealing with it. And those that think we're under control think they're not, we're not doing the right thing for theirs, and we try to balance these things out. But the other thing with this downtown stuff, I mean, I'm, again, I represent the city, but also the South Side, and I don't have any particular like feeling that I need to make sure downtown is thriving. Downtown is, there's a private enterprise down there, and I agree with some of the comments that there's speculation driving up property values. That's, that's not the government doing that. And I think we'll see some changes in that in the coming months. I don't know if you picked up on some of these charts, but some of the commercial values are going down, which is what's hurting some of the residential property taxes too, because the residentials are paying a higher percent of the overall levy. I do plan to support the levy tonight based on my experience over this last year and working it, and I think we're at the right place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer, then Campion.
Thank you. You know, the budget is our biggest responsibility as a city council, and I take that to heart. There's some of the things I think that get lost. But first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Stru for his business and all that he's done. And I share his Broadway and the brick and COVID and everything else that affects small businesses, and they've been here for 75 years, and I thank him for that. The people who come up to speak is important, and we do listen to that. We started this budget process back in April, and we've had plenty of times for people to come and say, hey, this is, this is what I think. And I've listened to a lot of different people. Well, one of the couple of things that one of my biggest pet peeves is that the LGA, which is the aid we get from the state, is going to be at $4 million next year. Duluth gets $30 million. That has dropped unbelievable amount. If you want to save money on our tax rate, it's $800,000 worth of cuts. If you came to me and I said this to Joe, come to me and say, hey, this is where I want to cut $800,000 out of your budget, I'd be more than willing to listen. If you want to cut our wages, I'm more than happy to cut my wages up here. You want to cut my training budget, I'm more than happy to do that. Do I think we'd get four votes? No, I don't. It's an absolute honor to serve on the city council and serve the ward. It's, it's an honor. We hear about cars running, but what they don't hear here is that the police department leaves their cars running because they have a lot of equipment in there that they need to save, and they leave the cars running. They're not trying to waste money on that. We don't do competitive bidding. We do competitive bidding every time that we think it's best to do or that we have to by law. Competitive bidding is what we have to do. We have to take the lowest bidder. But we also belong to a group of buying. We can buy our cars far cheaper than going out for competitive bidding. We buy them off the state contract. We do a lot of stuff with the state contract. So there's a lot of things that happen in the city government that makes sense. Some of it is beyond our control. We had no control over COVID. We kept our tax rate at zero the first year for COVID. We did that because we didn't know what was going to happen. But it does come back and bite us in the long run. Again, this is our biggest responsibility, and if you have a problem, you have a question, you're more than happy to reach out to me, but I will be supporting this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Campion.
So I'm going to start by saying thank you to our finance team. This is kind of bittersweet, my eighth and final budget as a council member. And through this, I know that like the whims of exactly what we want to pay and how we want to pay it, and what are the financial kind of economic constraints that are going to hit us is things we just don't always have perfect vision to as we go through the process. And I've never felt like you guys missed a beat at all and give us really good information on how to tailor the budget and target the outcomes that we looked. And I think to Administrator Zolms and the other two administrators I had the pleasure of serving alongside, the ability to tailor the budget to meet our priorities, I think, is really key. I'd just be remiss if I didn't address the idea that, you know, I should have been more prepared, is what I heard. This will be the eighth budget that I vote for, because ultimately, I feel like getting to this point and casting a no vote would kind of indicate to all of you that, what have I been doing all year? Right? Like, I had all year to get the budget to the point I wanted to support it, and tonight is the night we're passing it. I would consider that a significant abdication of my responsibility and the reason I was elected. So I will be supporting it. I'll have Verklempt thinking about it, my last opportunity to do it. But I love this city. I watch these budgets incredibly closely. I spend a lot of time with our staff paying attention. Until the talking point of wasteful spending is articulated in terms of actionable budget changes, it is just talk. It should go in one ear and out the other, because people have the opportunity for all year to bring up items they want to change and to build a coalition of people willing to make that change. And it has not happened. So I have seen changes made that I want and that other council members want throughout this two-year budget process, and I think it's working. So I, I respect the people that have concerns. I listen very closely to those. I think it's important that we hear them. But I also think it's important that in the end, this community has a budget that it can hold us accountable to and that we can hold ourselves accountable to. So I will be voting in support of it tonight, and I would ask my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you, Councilmember Campion. I don't have a ton more to add. Some of my colleagues have really shared some, some highlights that align very closely with how I feel as well. You know, we, we do all this diligence and thinking about different elements of our budget and making sure we're maintaining our 50-year AAA financial rating, highest rating we can possibly have in Minnesota, correct?
In, in the country.
In the country. You know, we, there is not a huge amount of space to wiggle, especially in the tax levy. And I just, so I want to make a couple of points about that. When Ms. Elms was hired, I, and I was fresh off my campaign, thinking about increasing efficiency across city government as a top priority, I sat down with her many, many times and said, I'm really concerned that we're not as efficient as we possibly can be. And she said, it's a long, you know, she was new in her position, it's a long-term approach, and we're starting now, and we're thinking long-term, and we're building those blocks to make sure that we have a highly efficient government. And I have watched her for two years as our city administration, or as our leader in our city administration with her colleagues, build and build and build more efficiencies in our government. So even though our, our budget is increasing, it is doing so in a way that's very controlled to support our growing community. So it is not, we are not swimming in wasteful spending. We are using our resources as diligently as we possibly can as stewards of all of your dollars. So yes, there's compassion for hardship to pay, of course, we understand. But we also love this community and we want it to be the best we can be. And it comes down to, are we going to cut police and fire out of our, or reduce police and fire in our tax levy? Are we going to reduce parks? I think parks are underfunded. Are we going to reduce airports? You know, it's just that the options are not great for where you actually could consider cutting the, cutting the budget. So I, I listened fully, I listened fully since early in the year, and we'll have the opportunity to do so again early next year, and thinking about our next two-year cycle and how we can become even more efficient and effective as we serve our community. But we need to be responsible as policymakers for setting those strong strategic priorities and helping guide staff in how they use their resources as well as they possibly can to meet the needs of this diverse community. Any final comments, questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. In favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay.
Motion aye.
Motion carries. Five, one, one. All right, thank you, everyone. We are going to take, let's take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:30 and then we'll move on to item G four.
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We are moving on to item G four, another public hearing, which is restricted development conditional use permit preliminary plan, number CD 2022-008CUP, to be known as Stensel Apartment Development. And I believe we have Ed Caples here joining, maybe virtually. There you are. Mr. Caples, go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you, President Carlson. President Carlson and members of the council, good evening. My name is Ed Caples with Rochester Community Development, and tonight I will be bringing forward conditional use permit CD 2022-008CUP. This application is a restricted development conditional use permit preliminary plan for the development of a five-story, 109-unit multifamily building with 83 off-street parking spaces. This site was before the city council in May requesting a zoning map amendment from B4 to TOD note. The application was denied by the city council in part because it did not align with the city's recent link rapid transit investment. At that time, the city council did indicate that the site was suited for residential development. The development services team supports this project with additional density and housing. Its proximity to a variety of goods and services, the nearby servicing of public transit, and the site's ability to connect with a variety of employment centers supports such a determination. Community development does recommend this project abide by the neighborhood protection standards found in the Unified Development Code. This will result in a maximum height of 35 feet for any portion of the building located within 100 feet of the southern property line. Additional comments from various city agencies will further impact the site layout. Restricted developments are a two-step process, a preliminary and final plan. This preliminary plan is the first step, and the applicant has requested to waive the final plan. The community development team does not recommend the waiving of the final plan because of the outstanding comments and conditions which could substantially alter the project. There was a hearing at the planning commission on November 9th. Many neighbors spoke about the parking and traffic issues. The planning commission ultimately approved the application with staff conditions for two. Community development is in support of this project with conditions as listed on page 548 of the city council packet. That concludes my summary, but I am happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Caples. We'll get back to you. With that, we'll invite the applicant or representative of the applicant. Please introduce yourself, and you have up to 10 minutes.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Vanessa Hines. I'm an engineer with Widseth, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mr. Nathan Stensel with Stensel Group. He's also in attendance tonight. I'd like to thank Ed for, for his presentation and for the detailed staff report that's included in the packet tonight. For anyone in attendance or online, I'd like to just give a brief background on the application before you. As Ed mentioned, the request is a restricted development conditional use permit for three parcels located between 16th Avenue Northwest and 13th Avenue Northwest, south of Fifth Place and north of Cascade Creek. The parcels total about one acre and are currently developed as a restaurant and a triplex unit, the Perkins site, I think that we're all familiar with that. The application is a five-story multifamily residential building with first floor parking to accommodate 83 stalls, and then upper floor, the upper four floors will have 109 units of residential units. The building will have many amenities, such as an indoor fitness center on the first floor, rooftop patio on the second floor, a dog park, community gardens, bicycle repair station, and individual patios for each unit. As you may recall, we were before you in May requesting a zone change for the TOD, which was ultimately denied. While that request was not successful, we heard from this council that there is support for this project in this location. We heard from everyone that restricted development was the recommended path forward, and that's what brings us here tonight. We're at a unique point in time where the LDM, the Land Development Manual, is still in effect. The UDC, the Unified Development Code, has been approved, but won't, won't be effective until January 1st in 2023. So that posed a unique opportunity for us to work with staff, staff analyzing the different zoning districts that would be appropriate to compare this site to. We considered the B4 and R3 districts under the Land Development Code, or the Land Development Manual, and the MXG and R3 districts under the Unified Development Code. There's a table on the site plan, I won't go into much more detail about that. But staff ultimately recommended the MXG district to compare this to as it, as the plan most closely adheres to that district. We studied this development under current conditions and considered how well this development would move into the future. This area is intended to eventually become part of the TOD as part of the discussions that we learned in May. So it was important to the design team that this plan fits this location now and into the future. We believe that this application accomplishes that goal. A few features that we considered when looking at the design was pedestrian safety. We have moved sidewalks from behind the back of curb to provide a boulevard. We've added sidewalks where there were no sidewalks. We've separated the pedestrian access from the building from the parking garage access. And we, and then we also wanted to support multimodal transportation, which is a key element of the TOD in the future. So we proposed some improvements to the bus stop on 16th Avenue, which includes seating and some landscaping, as well as a bicycle repair and storage for the residents. With that, we reviewed the recommended conditions of approval, and we've been working with the federal agencies and with staff on design options and solutions. The development team is committed to coming up with design solutions that are mutually agreeable for everyone. We ask for your support tonight and that you will approve the restricted development preliminary plan before you. Thank you for your time, consideration, and I'm available for any questions as well as Mr. Stensel. Thank you.
We'll call you back up after the hearing if there are questions. All right. With that, we will open the public hearing, and I have a few people signed up here with me. So we are on G four. James Clark.
It's always obvious when a person brings something with them like this.
You have five minutes.
I'm James Clark. My wife and I have lived in the neighborhood for 38 years. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I refer back to a newspaper report back on April 13th in which they quoted Mr. Stensel saying, "He won't build something that doesn't fit the location and provide parking needed for the tenants as this company will continue to own the building." Well, this is the wrong plan for this neighborhood. Parking on the street will cause the same problems, which led to... Parking on the street will cause the same problems which led to us getting a residential permit parking status enforced today. But it will be much worse because of the number of cars involved. It will bring back conflict over spots, parking in driveways on grass, parking up on the lawns, arguments, even fights, violence over parking spaces and road rage. I've seen it happen, and it will happen again. Parking rage, you may ask? Well, this just occurred in New York last month. A thirty-three-year-old male shot a fifty-two-year-old male in a Walmart parking lot over a parking spot. In August, a twenty-two-year-old male shot and killed Joshua Lazar, don't know his age, in, again, a Walmart parking lot. And if you think Minnesota is too nice for this kind of behavior, a few years ago, a twenty-one-year-old Maplewood man drove over a woman twice over a parking place. So this won't promote harmony in the neighborhood. It will be, bring back conflict between tenants and the neighborhood. Now, it's ironic that they should list in their own plan how safety is an issue and that they designed the entrance, the pedestrian entrance on the opposite side of the building from their car entrance. Well, yet it's due to the shortage of parking that they have in their plan that's going to force tenants to cross busy streets to get to their cars. Lots of people dodging lots of cars every day, both leaving and returning. Lots of people, every day. Sooner or later, someone's going to get hit. I can foresee a situation where a parent says to their child, "Oh, I forgot that in the car. Please, Johnny, run back out to the car and bring it in and hurry because supper's almost ready." The next hear, the next thing they hear is the sound of a car hitting their, their child. Thud. This is what it looks like when that happens. This is our son at the age of ten crossing a busy street. He knew he shouldn't. Why did he do it? He's ten. This is what's going to happen. You've got lots of people crossing busy, busy streets. Two adults have been killed on Civic Center Drive in the last few years, both in their sixties. They knew better, but they were still crossing, struck, dead. So I'd also like to point out, it's also wrong for some of the tenants. At least twenty-five of the tenants will not have any onsite parking, twenty-five percent. This shortage of parking may set up some for failure, to set them up for failure. In a series of articles in the Minneapolis Star Tribune this fall, they explain how, how small the money reserves are for some of the economically disadvantaged individuals. They described how an unexpected expense could derail a person's life, compounding a small incident into a mountain of debt. For example, it's late some night, there may be a storm or a snowstorm or something, and a person parks overlapping a dri, a person's driveway. Or it's a cold snap and their car won't start after, you know, at thirty below. Due to the odd and even parking regulations or the need to plow the street, their car is ticketed and towed. Now, the owner is faced with a ticket, fees, fines, and a towing charge. They don't have that much money in reserve, so they can't get their car out of the impound lot. Without a car, they can't make it to work. Now their livelihood is at risk. If they lose their job, they could lose their place of living, all because of a parking fine. They have been set up to fail because they're one of that twenty-five percent who doesn't have onsite parking. The other example can be found in tonight's agenda. Several instances in your slides, if you page through the agenda, of, there were issues of weed control, grass mowing, yard cleanup, and tree removal. Simple tasks, but when you add fines, fees, citations.
Wrap up your comments. You're out of time.
Okay. So, in overall, this is not a good fit for the neighborhood. This will, it, it's going to create problems that are not going away, that will never be, get better. It will be with us forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone joining virtually? It looks like Ms. Harden, you have your hand raised. Go ahead, introduce yourself. You have five minutes.
Hi, yeah, Paula Harden. I am concerned, I know that there's a deliberate effort on the part of the city to put denser housing in the southwest area, which is, you know, well-known to be the habitat of the rich and well-off and single-family dwellings. But that is a dis, that is a distinct different problem. I am concerned about this issue of parking because, as you all know, as a disability rights activist, one of the problems I have with the move your car every twenty-four hours or off-site, off-site parking or having to park your, your car on the other side for snow is what about people with disabilities or the elderly or infirm or somebody broke their leg temporarily? And they don't have anywhere to park. And now, this is a hundred and nine units, but it's only having to provide eighty-three parking stalls. And I'll bet you they're charging rent for each and every one of them. And there would be a minimum of a certain amount of dedicated handicap spots. And I'd also like to know if the developer is aware of the Fair Housing Act amendments of nineteen eighty-eight that requires two percent of the units to be developed, and if they're willing to do something better than two percent of the dwellings, since we are mid-city and accessible housing is less than one percent. So in their plans, are they going to have what the FHAA requires and which our building code department does not review plans for? Such as thirty-six wide interior doors and entrances, no-step entrances and, and short as possible direct route from the handicap parking into the building. It only requires two percent, but that's just not enough. So are they willing to step up and provide more like twenty percent? Which is what we've been asking for as a city for people with TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. All right, next person I have signed up for item G four is Rita Clark.
Hello, I'm, I'm Rita Clark. I'm Jim Clark's wife. As Jim said, we've lived in our neighborhood for about thirty-eight years. I also, Jim and I are quite fortunate in that we have a two-car garage, so we have a two-car driveway. Most of the houses in this area are single-car garage. So already, a lot of people are parking on the street because they need to, rather than move, shuffle their cars around. And I know parking sounds like a real nuisance, especially compared with all of the issues with the budget, the tax rate, or the tax levy. And I'm not going to complain about my ten percent tax increase, even though I'm on a fixed income. But parking will be a constant nuisance every single day. And the only way that you're going to gain parking in that area is that you change Four and a Half Street from only parking on the north side of the street to parking on both sides of the street. I don't think you realize how much traffic that street gets between Walgreens and the dry cleaners. We're going to have a new business in the old Dobbies, which is going to increase traffic as well. They say that this is no more traffic than what was generated by Perkins. Perkins had a driveway on Sixteenth Avenue and Fifth Place. Those driveways are going away. Hence, the traffic is going to be rerouted down Thirteenth Avenue and Four and a Half Street. The other thing is, is that parking currently on Fifth Place, which would be on the side of the new apartment complex, already hinders traffic. Sightline, making turns on Sixteenth. If you, and the only safe thing to do would be to eliminate parking on that. So that takes about four or five places out of circulation. And on Thirteenth Avenue as well. There's a lot of congestion. Many of us have been nearly hit by cars whipping around the corner, going to the dry cleaner, making wide turns, and even on Four and a Half Street. They took out the stop sign for some reason at that intersection. I don't know why. It's, it's a hazard. So I know parking seems like a very mundane nuisance problem, but it will be a continual problem. And if you expect people to move into the apartment complex that don't have cars, I think you're, you're just not thinking clearly. How many of you know two people in separate households that don't have a car? If not two cars? So it's not like we're missing only, you know, twenty-six parking spaces. It's a couple, they still may have two cars. If it's two people that are rooming together, two cars. The city is not ready to really accept our built apartment complexes, thinking people are not going to have their own transportation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else joining virtually who would like to speak? Use the raise hand function or press star nine. See, no one will move on to Becky Nagel.
Hi, council members. Becky Nagel. I guess I just basically wanted to support what, you know, I lived in the house at four twenty-one Thirteenth Avenue for more than four years. We have built a new house and moved out of there and sold the house to my son now in July. But just with the experience of living there, I just wanted to toss out a couple of comments because I do agree that the Perkins site needs development. It's an eyesore. It's horrible-looking right now. And I do think there will be something built there. But I do think that there needs to be something addressed for protection for the parking, for the people in there. Now, it's, right now, it's parking from, I think, eight AM till four PM. I would suggest that the residents be allowed to have twenty-four-seven permit parking so that the area from Thirteenth Avenue, starting at four twenty-one and going around Fourth Street where this permit parking has been, that they be allowed to have this twenty-four-seven so that they can at least park within proximity to their own houses and not have this area filled up with cars from an apartment complex that isn't providing adequate parking for their residents. And I've heard it said a few times, you know, I've gone to some of these meetings and I've heard the developers say, well, you know, there's studio and one bedrooms and people that live in there typically don't have cars, and that's not, you know. I mean, the house that I lived in was triplex. And we rented it out for a bunch of years before, you know, finally just getting sick of the hassle of it. But no one, no one that lived even in that efficiency apartment, which was for a single person, one person in thirty-five years came without a car. Everybody had a car. And a lot of people picked that locale because it was close to the interchange of fifty-two and fourteen. They don't all go into downtown and they don't all ride a bus. So that would just be, my suggestion would be to allow permit parking twenty-four-seven for the residents back in there. I mean, I do think that the magnitude of the proposed apartment house is too big for the area, but I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be approved and I think it's gonna go through. I mean, I, I do want to say that the parking, or not the parking, but the traffic factor has been a nightmare this past spring. You know, I mean, you, you go to the house, I still go over there and visit. It's after three o'clock in the afternoon. Mayo's getting out. You know you can't get out onto Sixteenth Avenue, and you can't get out onto Eleventh Avenue. If you want to make a left-hand turn there, you are out of luck. So I went down Fifth Place, down by the old Dobbies. And there was a gentleman from Wadena that was trying to find an address, and he was all stressed out. He, you know, he told me afterwards, he tried to get out on Sixteenth, he tried to get out on Eleventh, he wasn't successful. Well, by the time he was trying down Fifth Place, and I, you know, followed him down there, in the middle of the street, he got frustrated. He didn't look behind him. He put his Chevy Silverado into reverse and backed right into me because he was so frustrated on trying to get out of there. And I saw him coming and I blew the horn and I even took a second and checked and threw the car into reverse. And by the time he hit me, you know, I mean, I didn't sustain a lot of damage and I certainly wasn't hurt, but my car was. But, you know, it's frustrating. It's very frustrating in that area. From about, you know, like they said, three to six, there's a lot of traffic. And I've heard traffic studies saying, you know, oh, there isn't. There is. So I think somebody needs to look into this and offer some protection, at least for the residents in there, before something just gets a stamp of approval and it goes ahead and there's, you know, people's quality of life is affected and their safety is affected from, you know, now until forever. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right, anybody joining virtually who would like to speak? Star nine, raise hand function. Otherwise, I have Michael Ness. Come on up. Please introduce yourself. Do you have five minutes?
My name is Michael Ness, and my wife and Connie and I have lived in our house on twelve eighteen Fourth Street for forty-three years. And as a resident of the area, I echo all of the comments of those that have come before me and after me as well. And I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ness. All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item G four? Please come on up.
Hi, I'm Ryan Zimmer. I live, those are my neighbors. I've lived there twenty-two years, and they've covered like most of the points that I was thinking of too, just with the whole potential parking wars. I mean, I've lived in other cities and been on both sides of the issue as an apartment person and then the homeowners nearby. So I hope at least, at the very least, this goes through, that there's somehow that the city lets us do permit parking for the homeowners only so that I'm not providing a parking lot for all the visitors that'll be coming for the people in the apartment complex. And those that, I, I think it's, be a little, a bit optimistic to think the level of spaces that they'll need. The other thing too is, I know they've done a study, but Perkins actually had a main access point out there where the bridge is, I think it's Sixteenth. And what's proposed, from my understanding, is they're actually going to be funneling it towards our neighborhood. So the majority of the traffic before was getting, there was, at Perkins there that I noticed, was usually going out on Sixteenth, where now it's going to be going right into my neighborhood or down Four and a Half, which is one street over. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zimmer. Anyone else? Come on up. Introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Joe Peter. I own a neighboring business right across the street from the proposed development, and I've been down there ten years. And I just, I want to agree with the neighbors that parking's a major problem down there. My employees come to work around seven, seven-thirty in the morning, and they're very hard-pressed to find any parking on the street whatsoever. I have spent quite a bit of time trying to lease parking across the street at the hotel at Famous Days from Dobbies Bakery. I mean, nobody, nobody wants to give anything up because it is a major problem there. People park in no parking areas. It's, it's poor visibility around corners. Several accidents on that street behind us. I, I, I'm very concerned about where my employees will park and, and, you know, businesses like the dry cleaners. I mean, what, their employees pull up and, and, or their customers pull up and want to pick up their, their goods and leave and, and it, it is a problem there and, and you know, additionally, and being in the automotive repair business for twenty-five years, I, you know, we probably service ten or eleven thousand cars or customers there every year, and I don't, I've never had a customer. or customers there every year and I don't, I've never had a customer tell me they're going to give up their car and start riding a bus. And I just, I don't think there's enough parking for 109 units in Rochester. I mean, we're not, this is in downtown New York. It is in Philadelphia and it is in California. And I just, I just think it's going to create some, some serious problems.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
So I guess Jennifer Caetano and I live on Fourth Street and I purchased my home three years ago knowing that there was a traffic issue when I purchased it. However, the roads that lead into what I call our little circle are blocked with Mayo employees, the Walgreens employees, people visiting Walgreens. And people will come onto 11 and you have people merging like this, right in front of where we need to turn as residents, in front of Joe's Auto. My car was totaled with my kids in it because people like to cross in front of traffic and not be able to see that there's other vehicles coming. I'm thankful that it was just my car totaled and not my kids. But having a five-story building in that neighborhood, it seems very tall and the amount of parking and increased traffic is not susceptible for the neighborhood and for us that live there. And also, are any of these apartments going to be income-based, affordable for other people? Or is it just going to be targeted for non-drivers and Mayo employees? Because I, as an ABC employee, would not be able to afford a $1,200, $1,500, $1,600 unit, which would require two incomes, which means two cars. I also have three kids. Two are going to be driving soon. That means I need five parking spaces for my household and I won't have that if we have to accommodate for everybody else that lives in the building. Plus, where do the people that I have coming to my home come to visit? Where do they park? The visitors from the apartment building, where do they go? Hy-Vee? Do we cross that 16th Street, 11th Avenue? West Circle or Civic Center? Where do people walk? There's no crosswalks. It's just not safe for anybody to be a pedestrian in that area, crossing those roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Last call? All right. We'll close the public hearing for item G4 and invite the applicant back up to provide responses as desired.
Hi, good evening. Nathan Stensel, Stensel Group. Appreciate you considering our application this evening. Just to kind of rehash where we started, I think last spring, we came through just going for a zone change, which didn't work out for us. We were encouraged to come back through a restricted development process so that we could be even more transparent with what we're trying to do, get feedback and work with staff to come up with a plan that is more suitable for the site. The unit count has been reduced. The parking count has been gone, has gone up from when we initially came. And just kind of want to hash through a few, or work through a few more things. 72% of the units in this building are going to be studio and one-bed apartments, which more than likely lead to one-bed or one-car type units, not say there couldn't occasionally be a two-car, one-bed unit. So 34, or 34 of the units are potentially two-car units, meaning two-bedroom or one-bed den-type living units. So, you know, the reality is, is we are not at a 1:1 parking ratio, but there are a lot of developments similar to this in your downtown zone, similar locations that don't quite meet that either. This area is, in the future, going to be a TOD area, which development like this is going to be encouraged. And under the new MXG zoning in the future, developments like this would be approved with as little parking as 55 spots in a unit or in a building of 109 units. When we did do the first application, we did a very extensive traffic study throughout the whole area. And the results of that did come back that this proposed use in this, that was actually at a higher number, 120 units, would produce slightly less traffic, traffic trips per day than the Perkins site did. We are, you know, I do understand their, the current neighbors' concern about the parking issue. Obviously, there's a parking issue in the area today due to its location to Mayo buildings. I think that that's just going to continue to be an issue. There's going to be a lot of changes in this area throughout the next couple decades. And we feel that this project is well in line with what the city is going to see in this area in the future.
All right. Is that, you're good with your response?
I'm good.
Okay. Then we will go ahead and open it up to questions. Councilmember campaign.
I have eight conditions and bullet one has A through G. Is your team comfortable with the conditions?
We are comfortable with the conditions.
I just want to make sure to get that on record.
Yep, sorry. Didn't mean to mention that.
Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, thanks. I'm interested in the fact this is a preliminary plat for this and you're asking to waive the final plat. Can you explain that to me?
When we first went back and visited with staff about the restricted development, they suggested at that time that we could propose to do that. And that's simply why we, we did. I think one of the approvals with planning may have been to not have a final, to come back through one more time, called us a preliminary, so. But I don't know how they list that. I know that did come out during planning, so.
Okay. All right. Again, I'm trying to understand enough to, I'm not in favor right now of, you know, kind of waiving that, but I wanted to understand if I had the right facts, so thanks.
Yep.
Other questions?
Well, I have a question for staff.
That's fine. Yep.
Does that particular area have permit parking on the street right now? For that area?
Mr. Caples, did you hear that? Or Mr. DeBroski, we can't hear you.
It does.
It does.
Yes.
Okay.
Park, we do have residential permit parking zone in that area.
All right.
Just have a question.
We have a couple of people in front of you, but yes. Councilmember Kirkpatrick, then Dennis, then Palmer.
Thank you. I don't know if this is a question for staff or for you, Mr. Stensel. The traffic study was approved or stated that there would be slightly less trips. Is that considering, is the slightly less trips designation considering the lack of access on 16th Avenue to the site?
Definitely. They take our, our plan and analyze that, as well as the surrounding area. When we were doing it, staff had suggested they wanted a bigger study. The fact is, is we probably spent three times as much as we would on a normal traffic study to do kind of a bigger analysis of this area, stretching across Civic Center. It was quite extensive and that is what the determination was.
And did it also include the 11th Avenue access to Fourth?
I, it basically, they analyze the way our plan is proposed today. So they look at the entrance and the exit, all the different areas that people can go from that point and then determine how many trips a day a building like this would generate.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. Just to echo some of, or to address some of the questions of residents, have, have there any safety measures being looked at to, for kids running, you know, like across the street or get to Hy-Vee? Or are there any things looking, you know, that you look at to try to mediate the risk of someone getting, you know, hurt and without parking?
Yep. So we have not had any of those discussions with staff as far as like potential crosswalks and that kind of stuff. I would sure hope that a lot of people would, more than likely, so the, get this right here, so the southwest corner of our building is where the dog park is and then there's a bus out there currently. But part of our proposed plan is to enhance that significantly to encourage the, the bus transportation at that location, make it a better experience. I would hope that if we could do something, it'd be in that area and it would encourage people to utilize the resources more in the Miracle Mile area rather than, you know, crossing Civic Center Drive, so.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question, because we need affordable housing incredibly, desperately, it's a housing crisis. What are the ranges for prices, affordability of your units?
Yeah, so when we started this process last, last winter, I guess, we had, we had a lot of ideas of what we wanted to do. The reality is here today, I don't, I don't really know. I mean, interest rates alone have gone up 2.5% in that time period, which for a project like this is about $600,000 a year. So the financial feasibility of the project as it sits today is, is really up in the air. So it's really hard for me to, to really talk to any affordability requirements or anything in the, in the winter. We had high hopes to provide a lot, a lot of affordability today. I, I can't make any commitments. The project itself is, is really difficult to make work if, if it does work at all right now.
Okay, so I'm not trying to push the subject, but just, so you're, I'm assuming you're saying it's not affordable housing as, as we would.
We, we may very well go that route, but I don't, I really don't know at this point. I had a very clear picture last spring. Our business, when it comes to finance and stuff today, has changed so much in a six-month period that I don't want to sit up here and tell you something that I know I can't do. I hope something changes. I hope cost of construction comes down. I hope interest rates come down. But unfortunately, I, I don't know where that's going.
Not a requirement of the building, so.
Yep. I'm sorry. I wish, I wish I had better news.
Councilmember Palmer?
Yep, from Public Works on Parking Permits. If I remember right, that, that whole area has an eight-hour and that's what I heard. Is there a ability for us to have a special parking area there for 24-hour parking with a permit and, and remove the, the snow removal so that they don't have to move the car back and forth? Can we do that?
This is Dylan again. I would say at this point, we can't. We would have to work through policy change to, to make those revisions to our on-street permitted parking program.
Can that be council-driven or does it have to be neighborhood?
Anything can be council-driven.
It can be council-driven.
So the, the question then becomes is that if, if, if we had CIA and we had four council members vote for it, we had a 24-hour parking for residential parking in that area and remove the, the snow removal or the other, every other side, that's something that's possible for the city council to do, isn't it?
It sounds like it is.
City council can do anything.
So, so I guess that, that would be one option for us to look at doing. Because that is a, if you haven't been in that area and I've been in that area quite a bit, it is an unusual area and very close to Mayo and it is a cutoff for a lot of different traffic. So I would be all in favor of doing that. I know it doesn't affect you, but I think that would help all the neighbors and take care of some of the dilemma. And so I think that's the route we'll go later on. You won't be billing between now and June, right?
No, no.
We usually can get things done in six months, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember Palmer, councilmember campaign?
Yeah, I just, Ms. Dennis hit it at the end, like the, there's not a particular standard that we measure affordability on with this particular application. And given that we're in a quasi judicial review, we really need to stick to the criteria. The one piece that I just heard that I think I wanted to call out is the support for parking around the building. I think, again, borders on germane for this particular application. Like, it's very, very close. But things about switching the street configuration or looking around there, again, things you should hold the council responsible for, but would probably be taken separately from tonight's action, probably something we have to come back around. That all being said, I would not disagree with Councilmember Palmer. I think there's some, it's frankly, the network of streets there is a little bit unique and produces some really challenging, I think, constraints. So, you know, overall, I just wanted to make sure we delineated those from the merits of the application before us, which I think is our responsibility tonight.
Was there a question in there?
Nope.
All right. Councilmember Bransford?
So in the traffic study, a few, I, I live very close to there and walk to Hy-Vee sometimes. And I was just looking at it in Google Earth, looking at the configuration of where the development would be relative to businesses and exits onto the major arteries. Did the traffic study say anything about trips going into the neighborhoods versus just going out onto, say, the, the main arteries to get out? So afterwards, is there any reason for those cars to go into the neighborhood? Because it's a kind of a funky configuration.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't have those details, but it is very extensive. It does talk about the different traffic flow throughout the area.
I'll have to look at it more carefully. And I guess I'll save my comments for when we have comments.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I just lost it. Sorry.
Was it for Mr. Stensel?
It was, I don't remember. I had something written down, but Ms. Dennis covered a portion of it and then Bransford just brought up something and then the minute you called on me, I was going to bounce off of Bransford and it's gone. But I'll get it back.
Well, we are going to let Mr. Stensel sit down. So this is your last moment. No pressure to.
I'm happy to come back up if you'll let me, but.
Oh, I know what it is now. Yes, it was speed tables or speed bumps, kind of along the lines of the, the parking. And I've, I've had a nephew hit by a car in Center Street.
He, councilmember campaign, just that that wasn't germane to the conversation.
Right. So that's, that's it. It's the extra thing.
Obviously, we're open to all those things, but not our call, so.
Okay.
We good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
All right. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve of the eight conditions.
Second campaign.
All right, councilmember.
Point of order, you may motion approve the thing. What about the part two when deny the final plat? You're not, you're denying the final plat?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Denying the waiving.
Denying the waiver of the final plat. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
Well, see, it's a unique area. It's a unique neighborhood. I, I have sympathy for the neighbors with, with the parking. I think we can take that on a different term and the neighborhood parking. I do believe, just knowing some of the Mayo clinic employees, that they do not always have cars and we're leaning that direction. And, yeah, if you're going to get an apartment and you want to rent a, a space, you're going to have to make sure that you have that. So I think this is a great use for this piece of property. I think the restaurant was nice, but it's not going to be a restaurant anymore.
Thank you. Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, I, having experienced living next to the Berkman and now the Red Cow and all the traffic and parking on the street, I really do sympathize, you know. And there it's even more constrictive. And as a matter of fact, my car got totaled Wednesday night by some guy that hit it in an F-15 Eagle and screaming down 15th. Just because, you know, there's so much traffic and, and parking issues. So now we have Legacy Row Homes. We have Cottage Grove, not a lot of parking. So it is true that this is becoming more common in the area. But this is a particularly more difficult area and I, and I really would like to follow Mr. Palmer's lead or, and have some, some way to get permit parking or special parking for just the residents to take the edge off of, of this. So hopefully, we can follow up with those things again. As Mr. Campaign said, definitely not germane. Absolutely not to the, the legal criteria that we have to vote upon. But it is an issue that I, as your ward representative, will definitely follow up on. Absolutely.
Good to hear. I'd support that too. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I'm, I'm really, really for this project. I'm, I'm really, really for this project and I always have been. Um, I don't know how many other projects I voted on that are not within walking distance of a grocery store, that are not within walking distance of shopping, that are not within walking distance of restaurants, that are not within walking distance of work. This is an incredible site for the project that's being proposed. None of us like change, especially me. But our city is growing and changing exponentially. I, I, I don't even think we can measure it anymore. We have been unable to keep up with infrastructure demands of our city and maintenance. We need to start infilling the spaces that we have as we grow to be more environmentally, more economically sound, and also from the social justice component of giving access to people for where they live. I understand the economic drawbacks that Mr. Stensel faces with this property. We're all going through that with COVID and the, the new, the new world that we're gonna be facing in the next few years. However, I don't think this neighborhood that was designed and built, well, this is late 50s, this neighborhood. I don't know how many times on a monthly basis I would cut through on Four, Four and a Half Street to have my monthly little breakfast with my old neighbor at Perkins. I'm really familiar with this area. We would never design places like this anymore because of the safety issues with traffic. It's highly congested, so I agree with Palmer and Bransford that we need to do something to make this safe, to somehow, somehow honor the neighborhood and the issues and the concerns that they have while also growing into the type of city that we are more than likely going to become 10, 20, 30, 50 years down the road. However, I'm with you, Keen. I, I don't want to waive the final plat. I think that's wrong, so I want to make a motion to.
It's not being waived. The motion does not waive it.
I was making sure that it was.
It's a line.
Got it, okay, got it. All right, so we will be able to see the final plat. Awesome, great, thank you.
I was going to say the many of the same things as you did and just from our council priority perspective, one of our priorities is affordable living, so even if rents don't end up, being able to be more affordable, which would be ideal, um, thinking about the context of the location, that it's so wonderfully accessible to so many key resources that promote an affordable and quality life. All right, councilmember campaign.
So before I get to my comments, I just wanna, like, for the record, it was it was not, it was not waiving the final plan. So you said plat. I just wanna make sure, you know, it's the plan that comes back, not, not the plat.
Yes.
That's what we're on, preliminary plan. So there'll be the final plan.
Yes, 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 sorry.
So I, I, there's a couple of things I think we're still working through as a community. It's, um, not, not easy. So definitely hear all the constraints about, uh, streets. I lived, uh, for a long time on one of the more busy suburban streets in Rochester and, you know, seeing anyone's child get hit is, uh, gut-wrenching and something I've spent many nights worrying about, given that. So, uh, that, I'm extremely sympathetic to that. I think it's incredibly important and incumbent upon us to come up with a, a system of fixing these streets that doesn't, um, that doesn't, uh, put all the onus on people that are doing kind of development that fits within the mold of what we're laying out. So that's partly that kind of ger- germaneness of that discussion and, and asking your ward rep to bring it back in the future to look at what we can do there. I think there are, they're both systems and solutions to that problem. I do wanna just, maybe, um, the fortuiteness of being an outgoing member, uh, throw some cold water on, on it to say, like, the idea that there's sufficient parking for every resident to have five parking spots or to talk about the number of street spots that each house is gonna get. Like, that's a really important thing for us to address head-on. If we do not have any street parking available for the development of apartments, that really does change the model a lot and I think will really hurt our affordability goals, because we're going to be parking up, uh, apartment buildings. That, is that right? Is that wrong? It can be whatever. I, I, I just think that, um, the idea that if you went on the street and demarcate, say, three spots for every home, there will not be much parking left. And we've always taken a position that that is public parking. That's not the homeowner's parking. So those are really critical discussions for us to have because as people want to live downtown, as we do that, it gets more contentious for the spots and I, I heard it called a war. I spent plenty of time in St. Paul and know what it's like when you shovel a spot out and then you have to, uh, wait for someone to come pull in and take it. But all that being said, like, the actual criteria that we use to evaluate these tonight, given the direction we've set with the, uh, the development standards, this seems to fit the direction we're going and I think that, to me, um, is really what we're setting the path for tonight, so. I, I went through this, looked at the conditions. It seems like it meets it. I agree with not waiving the final plan. They'll bring that back, so, uh, I think this is safe to move forward tonight.
Final comments? Councilmember Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, looking at voting records, I've always voted with exceptional one, um, time for housing, because the more housing we have, the, you know, the philosophy that drives it, housing prices down or increases, um, accessibility of housing. But even though I'm passionate about the environment and housing, uh, when we talk about public safety and accessibility, people need parking and, um, I, we heard from Paula Harding about some of the issues, um, people with limited mobility face. I, I'm a, you know, mom of three kids and I guarantee my $300 rusted-out minivan is essential for our transportation. And I couldn't do, um, buses to, uh, you know, different schools and, and different activities and, um, so people need parking and to make the unit accessible to everyone, every age, every ability, you, you need to have access to parking and I, I get it that we want to move toward less, you know, reliance on, on oil and, and more, you know, environmental means of transportation. I, I believe that, but I, I think we need to make sure that our, our housing is, is available to everyone and safe, uh, you know. Seeing the picture of a child hit by a vehicle i- is unfathomable to, you know, I mean, kids run around, play out, and the more people you have in, in buildings, the more kids you have. I just, I don't think this is the right project. I feel that we do need housing, you know, we do need housing there. You know, if we can fill in exactly what, um, councilmember Kirkpatrick said about accessibility to, you know, food and, and, um, essentials. But without the parking, uh, like the business owner spoke, uh, their employees can't park. It hurts businesses. It is a safety issue. Uh, I, I spent time at a neighborhood meeting, um, in Ward Six about, um, issues with seasonal parking and speed. And, uh, you know, th- this, this stuff, um, impacts, um, I believe, um, more, um, people who are, uh, struggling, lower income, you know, you have maybe, you know, um, you know, maybe you have, you know, different vehicle needs and, and having to pay fees and fines because you, you know, parking, um, you can't find parking and get towed. I, I just, um, golly, I, I really am a, um, we need housing, um, but I think we need to do something different with this lot. Find housing that is accessible to everyone, so I, um, am not gonna vote for this project.
All right. Are we done? Ready to vote? Or say aye?
Aye.
Naye?
Nay.
You carry six, one. All right, moving on to item G5. Thank you, everyone that spoke. We are looking at the general development plan, number CD 2022 001 GDP, known as Preserve of Mayo Wood. And I think we have Allison Sosa here to speak. We're joining virtually.
President Carlson, I'll be bringing you this item tonight.
Thanks, Mr. McGee. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, President Carlson, uh, members of the council. Good evening. My name is Desmond McGill. I'm with the Community Development Department. Um, I'm bringing you the, uh, application for the GDP for the Preserve at Mayo Wood. Uh, the Preserve is a, a Mayo Wood is an 88-acre site. Uh, it's generally located, uh, north of Mayo Wood Road, south of the South Fork of the Zumbro River, west of 30th Avenue Southwest, and has a zoning designation of R1, which is mixed, single-family residential. The developer is proposing the future development of approximately 129 residential units on the 88 acres. Rochester Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended this for approval, uh, subject to eight conditions. Uh, after the public hearing, the applicant submitted a revised general development plan which addressed, uh, condition 1A and B of that report. Therefore, community development is recommending that the council approve this application subject to seven conditions as identified on the council action form. That includes my summary intro, uh, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get back to you. Uh, with that, I'll invite the applicant or representative to come speak, introduce yourself, and you have 10 minutes.
I'm Mark Walsh with G-Cube Denture and representing the applicant. Uh, it's a partnership between Mark Hanson, Gene Peters, and Joe Powers, all local developers and business owners. This Mayo Wood property, uh, might have seen some of the things. This has been a property that's been available for sale for a long time and, uh, the opportunity to develop this came up and, uh, they purchased the property just about a year ago and so we've been spending the last year working through all the other details with, uh, connectivity index, layouts, um, floodplain criteria. Wetlands were delineated before, but we finally got to something that I think that we're in agreement, um, with community development and with the neighborhoods. Uh, we had multiple meetings with neighborhoods and a few of them here that may or may not want to speak, but, uh, I think the, the items that we've been able to put together with this project as far as how we're gonna get pedestrian facilities or have a concept for pedestrian facilities to infill an area that currently people have to walk out on Mayo Wood Road. I think we got a good plan here and so I'm here to answer any questions. We are, uh, fine with the seven conditions, so.
Call you back up after the public hearing?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I will open the public hearing and we have several people signed up for item G5. I think Sean Kettlecamper, the first?
Hi, my name is Sean Kettlecamper. When we think of the Mayo Wood area, we, we don't, uh, generally think of it as, uh, as an infill area, uh, and, um, you know, it's known for its pastoral ambiance, um, but it is a part of a national, uh, registry historic area. It's a landmark and, you know, people that come here, uh, are very curious usually about going out to Mayo Wood and very keen to, uh, drive down Mayo Wood Road. And it, it's sort of a, um, a collection of things that they see as they go down there. It's the stone barns, it's the, the, uh, greenhouses, the Ivy Cottage, the Beerman House. All of that is part of the experience of going to Mayo Wood and understanding the, uh, the root of our, of our city. But it's, it's, you know, I just think of, uh, I don't think anybody in that area would be willing to have, say, Mayo Wood Road changed into, uh, four lanes plus exit routes, um, going up and down, uh, there, I think it's, it's just gonna ruin the whole, uh, ruin the whole area. There's p- there's places that have been for sale out there where, uh, for years. And then, uh, uh, you'd see the sign and it would say it was sold. And then maybe a month later, it would be back on, on the market again because it comes, uh, that the, uh, the road, if it was widened out, would come right up to the bottom of their front steps. So it's not, uh, it's not just the idea. I mean, 129, whatever they call it, it's not townhomes, but, uh, there's a lot of people, if you consider that maybe there's two people in each house, maybe more. And, uh, you know, not to mention like the traffic that, you know, you've been talking about other, uh, projects, but you know, the road is gonna have to be upgraded to go through there and it's not going to be, uh, the, uh, the quaint place that it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kreisel, I'm sorry I skipped you. Please join us at the microphone.
I have one, I have one, thank you. I've got one question. Has there been a traffic study to determine to what degree the existing roadways will require modifications as well as of the impact, the potential impact of the limestone dragon-tooth fences, which I think are a charming attribute to that particular area? We've talked about traffic and traffic, uh, requirements. So I would like to, uh, hear, uh, from the spokesman for Mr. Powers and, as relates to, uh, if there was a, a traffic study to know how it's going to change in that particular area, because I'm thinking about the bridge as well that was just rebuilt, I think, what, about four or five years ago? Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Mayo?
Hello. Good evening, President Carlson and City Councilmembers. I'm Catherine Mayo. I've been asked by my family and my parents to read a letter on their behalf as they are unable to attend this meeting, um, tonight. Dear Rochester City Councilmembers, we are sending this letter to be read in our absence at the meeting considering the general development plan by Mayo Wood Lands LLC. We are concerned about the environmental, social, historical, and infrastructural ramifications that this housing development will create. Certainly such a development will likely have a negative impact on home and property values in the area. We trust this proposed development is in compliance with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources statutes regarding construction in flood zone areas. That alteration of vegetation and topography will prevent erosion into public waters, prevent bank slumping, protect wildlife habitat, and preserve the existing shade, shading of water surfaces and screen the development from the river view. If this is a Washington district, we trust that the developers have obtained all the necessary permits or licenses from the appropriate state and federal agencies. Currently, the banks of the Zumbro River are homes to bald eagles, owls, hawks, waterfowl, and many diverse flora and fauna. The development will adversely affect this diverse wetland, which is also in the Decorah Edge area. Mayo Wood Road is enjoyed, enjoyed daily by residents walking their dogs, riding their bikes, and experiencing the seasonal changes of the quiet countryside. It is without a doubt that this quiet and peaceful area will not only be lost to our current residents, but also to future ones. Visitors to Rochester, uh, ride the trolleys to tour the pastoral and bucolic beauty of Mayo Wood Road, which is a nationally recognized historic district. Visitors enjoy the charm of the handmade dragon-toothed stonewall paid for by Dr. Charles Mayo to support unemployed men during the Great Depression. We appreciate Mr. Powers' lovely restoration of the Mayo Wood Stone Barns. Certainly, this historical site has proven to be a successful wedding and business venue to which people from all over Minnesota book for their events, months if not years in advance. Rochester residents and visitors appreciate the charm of Mayo Wood Road. Certainly, the, however, the construction of 129 homes will be a historic and aesthetic detriment. The impact of traffic from the development onto Mayo Wood Road and Bamber Valley Road cannot be underestimated. If Mayo Wood Lands LLC is granted permission to proceed with the construction of so many homes, hundreds of additional cars will spill onto Mayo Wood Road in both directions daily. Cars line up at Bamber Valley School twice a day while parents drop off their children. School buses arrive and leave with students contributing to the congestion. Will roads need to be expanded at taxpayers' expense to accommodate the additional traffic this development will create? What are the infrastructural ramifications that this undertaking will impose on Rochester's taxpayers? And how will the development affect the property and home values of the Ros- of the surrounding area's residents? Certainly, traffic alone will have a negative impact. And of note, updated comments dated 11/12/2022 from Rochester Public Works to Community Develop states that, and I quote, "There are inadequate on- and off-site public facilities, specifically public roadways, sanitary sewer, public water, stormwater management facilities, and pedestrian facilities existing to accommodate the development of this property. No development will be allowed to occur until the city council has determined that all required public facilities are, uh, adequate for said development." So lastly, the semi-ruled historical and riparian beauty of Mailwood Road, we feel is not being preserved by this proposed development. Perhaps Mailwood Lands LLC would consider building fewer, perhaps larger homes on lots or lots in the field around the stone barn. This would minimize the impact on the watershed, destruction of habitat for wildlife, significantly reduce traffic, and prevent the negative impact on real estate values of the residents in the area. I ask the members of the City Council to carefully consider both the short and long-term ramifications of this development. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak who hasn't had? Oh, thank you. Chad Hergot, I'm sorry if I missed you earlier in my run through my spreadsheet here. So go ahead when you're ready. You have five minutes.
All right, thank you very much. I assume you guys can hear me. My name is Dr. Chad Hergot, and it is my belief that the City Council should not approve general development plan, this general development plan requested by Mailwood Lands LLC. There are too many unaddressed concerns. First, and of the absolute most importance, is the geographic implications that development of this area would have due to the wetlands and the Decorah Edge. I read in the final draft council report that they are not constructing homes on the area of the Decorah Edge, and was pleased to read at least that. But, but this is not nearly enough. For those who aren't familiar with the Decorah Edge, here are a couple of critical things you need to know. These points are taken from a previous presentation from Terry Lee, Environmental Services Coordinator of Olmsted County, called Decorah Edge a critical water, water supply component. First, it is the source of about half of Olmsted County's drinking water. Second, it functions as a natural water filter that is worth millions of dollars annually. Third, much of it will be impacted by developments in the next twenty-five years. Fourth, development, development in the, development impacts may significant, may be significant and irreversible. I do not see any comments from the County Environmental Resource Committee. So it is my concern that there hasn't been either enough study or transparency regarding the impact of this proposed development on this absolutely critical area. I've heard comments from council members just tonight that Rochester is growing at a rate that can't be measured. We need to look not just in the next few years or even few decades. We need to take actions to protect our natural resources, including our water supply, long after everyone here is dead and gone. Remember, actions taken today are irreversible. Second, Rochester Community Development members state support for this plan, but this plan does not even uphold their own requirements put in place for public safety. This specific violation relates to the street connectivity index score. It, this, they state it needs to be one point five if there are over, to be over one hundred, one hundred proposed lots, and Mailwood Lands is proposing one hundred and twenty-nine lots. The connectivity index for this proposal is a mere one point two eight, fifteen percent below the value needed if the development had only one hundred lots. But remember, the proposed development, development has one hundred and twenty-nine, making one point two eight drastically lower than the required level for development. This is a huge safety risk for the development's future residents, as highlighted by the Sustainable Development Code, which offers best practices for community development. They state, "Connected streets are healthier and safer streets. Contrary to popular belief, an abundance of cul-de-sacs and few intersections actually result in more dangerous, more dangerous streets as faster speeds are incentivized at the risk of, at the expense of non-drivers. It is increased prevalence of intersections, pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit in better-connected street systems, which urge slower and more cautious driving." It is stated in the public material available for this meeting today by the development team that sidewalks are not proposed for this local streets in the development, nor are they required since the streets will not be privately owned and maintained. It is my belief that without sidewalks, combined with roads that encourage faster driving, they're essentially doubling down on ignoring safety of future residents. The correct action, the correct action Rochester, Rochester Community Development should take is to definitively state that no more than a hundred lots can be developed, rather than blatantly ignore those requirements. Please listen to the Rochester Public Works Department as Catherine Mayo mentioned earlier. I will move on. Finally, one must consider that this entire area is listed on the National Register, National Register of Historic Places, and Mailwood Road contains structures that have been protected for forty years. I do certainly hope that the City of Rochester will choose to keep these structures and maintain the significant history of the area as best as it can if this plan were to eventually pass. Thank you for hearing and acting on my concerns. This plan cannot be allowed to progress in the current form. Allowing it to pass shows that the City Council is ignoring established safety norms, not listening to the guidance of Rochester Public Works, not fully examining impacts on the environment, and potentially turning their backs on promises made to nationally historic lands. Thank you for allowing this time to speak.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right, well, we will close the public hearing and invite a chance for Mr. Walsh to come provide a response. You have five minutes.
Sure. Apologize for not probably explaining some of the background and history on this one, but they brought up some great points, and so we'll go through them. How this property ended up being a partnership between Mark Hanson, Gene Peters, and Joe Powers is Joe obviously has a stone barns. Mark Hanson had looked at this property back around two thousand and three, when Joe knew that there was another person that was interested in purchasing the property. He reached out to Gene and Mark. They brought it in. I initially did a layout. I had done some previous work on this property. And one of the things we had done is the wetland delineation. There's two wetlands on the property. We'd also done some sanitary sewer calculations. This property has to be served with a lift station for the most part, but there was calculations that the city required. So we worked with Public Works to find out, okay, what's the issues? Because there's a twelve-inch wa, sanitary sewer line out there that's very close for connection. We found is that the bottleneck is going to be further downstream. And so we did some calculations, and we estimated that about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty houses could be built out on that site. At that time, we were working with the seller of the property, and they were looking at whether there's a possibility of doing something that was like a higher density, whether apartment building, senior living, something. So, so my first meeting with the partner, or the development team, I had a layout ready coming in with, you know, two hundred and some lots, and the first thing was like, whoa, no. We're not putting so many lots out there. So we started working off what they were looking for, and what they wanted was a very similar project to what Mark Hanson's built and Gene Peters has all spent partners with on what we call Villa Projects. The Villa Projects are essentially single-family detached homes, but they a lot of times have the, the maintenance of all the lawn, the streets. Everything is a hundred percent within the homeowner's association. If somebody's tree dies, it's replaced by the homeowner's association's landscapers. It's not something that the homeowner has to take care of. What that creates is continuity in the maintenance and also everything, kind of, it doesn't say it looks the same, but it looks somewhat similar. So they're also looking at trying to incorporate houses that are kind of the farm style. They're going to be, you know, generally going to be the white colors, but they're not going to be the same. Mark Hanson's very adamant about making sure that every one of his houses, they may be the same style house and stuff, but something's changed up on the front. So when you drive out in some of the Villa Projects, you don't even realize that they're a Villa Project, and almost all of them have somewhat similar footprint. And so this development is, is not maximizing the amount of lots that can be out there. We also think that each of these houses is probably going to average a million dollars when it's all said and done. So the reason that we went with the private roads versus the public roads is because we're looking also for a security component that doesn't, is currently not available within Rochester in most of the developments, especially single-family detached houses of this size. And so we also looked at the possibility of, you know, how are we going to bring the roads in? We're limited on where we can bring roads in. One has to line up with Abigail Lane. The other one has to be on the west side of where the stone barns are. And so we worked with Olmsted County, who's actually the road authority out there. That's a county road, not a city road. And we met with them back in December of last year to determine where can we put safe accesses. And so the roads that are shown on the GDP are based on those locations. And those do line up where there's actually the dragons-to-stone fence. And one of the things that's going to be incorporated into the design is we're actually going to extend that fence. We're going to, where we have to make a cut to bring the utilities and streets in there, we're going to bring those in and kind of make a grand entrance, if you will, at each of those locations to kind of help delineate that this is a private development. And so that's, that stone fence, while we can't, you know, maintain it a hundred percent, we have to make those openings. We're going to continue it in, put some columns in there, make it look really nice. Again, these are going to be million-dollar houses, so it's going to be very high-end. The connectivity index is nothing to do with lots. Connectivity index is a hundred percent based on a formula that would normally work very well if you were in a grid pattern. Out here, we have constraints. To the east is developed property, and there's also a stone wall that runs a quarter mile along the east property line. To the north and west, we have a river. We can't do anything. We can't put a bridge across it to improve that connectivity index. And working around the stone barns made it even worse. So we worked out with the community development on this, and that's why they're supportive of a one point two eight versus one point five. Whether there's two lots out there or two hundred lots, the connectivity index doesn't change, so. The other components, like the layout is a hundred percent avoiding the wetlands. There's no impact that will have on those wetlands. We've, we'll be splitting, ascending in a no loss when we do our grading plan for it. The discussion on Decorah Edge, this property, if you look at the Decorah Edge overlay, just the very southwest corner, you got a little bit of the area that touches into it. There is actually no decor features that are within this property. There are seeps off-site to the south that drain east that never come onto our property, but this property is a hundred percent free and clear of any Decorah Edge features, even though that there's a portion that falls within the Decorah Edge overlay, so. And the discussion on the pathways and stuff, we're doing a widening road with a fog line. This has been down at Greystone, up at the Wyndham Woods for the locals to have a location to walk. We're not expecting a lot of traffic within this development. You're either going to go over one of these houses, it's not a cut across. It's essentially a loop road within the development. And so we feel that that fog line and walkway will be adequate to connect to what's more important is the public pathway. So I see the time's coming up here, but we also did do a traffic study and these issues.
We'll ask you about it, just to stay within our rules. Can you tell me about the traffic study?
So, yes, yes. So as part of the GDP, we had to do a traffic study. That was completed, and they're accounting for about half of the traffic would go towards Bamber Valley, half would go towards Salem Road. I don't know if people realize when out there, it's actually very, very convenient to go over Salem Road, and from there you can disperse wherever you need to in the city. But this traffic study came back, it's not going to lower the level of service. The issues that are currently out there are at the school, and they're school-oriented. And so there's nothing that the traffic study asks for or anything over and above, making sure that we have the site distances accounted for, which have been approved by the county.
All right, other questions? Councilmember Palmer?
So let's, let's, I just want to confirm in my head. Mailwood Road is not going to be expanded?
Correct. The county has, is not proposing any kind of improvements, and we've talked about that, like the, the sharp curves and stuff. It's part of the, part of what people like out there. It's also part of the problem with the traffic, but it's part of what people like. And to realign that road would require removal of more of the stone fences and the obelisks that are on the south side.
And so heading from the stone barns, I'm heading east. I've got the, the stone fences on both sides. They're going to remain? Except for where you're going to open up for your entrances, and you're going to replace them decoratively. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay.
It'll remain.
It, it's the cornfield now, correct?
Correct.
And, and I'm a little baffled because of the neighborhood, you know, everybody says it's romantic or whatever, but you've got Stonegate subdivision in there on the north side. You've got Mailwood Commons on the, on the south side. It's just basically continuing to have more housing. Am I not?
Correct. This would be the next and final phase of development available till you essentially run out of land to be developed within the City of Rochester that's south of the river.
In the development, you're talking that, that Mr. Peters is involved with it and, and Mr. Hanson, and they've done Metal Lakes, and it's going to be similar to that type of a, of a villa?
So the villas, yeah, then we've done Metal Lakes Villas, Orchard Hills Villas. There's actually a couple of different Villa Projects out at the Scenic Oaks. Scenic Oaks Ninth has a ten-unit Villa Project. Scenic Oaks West First had a Villa Project, and Scenic Oaks West Second has a nineteen-unit Villa Project. And if you drove in there, you wouldn't probably notice that those are actually Villa Projects, because they are, there isn't anything that stands out. They're not the same style of building. There's a different color in each one of those, so. Yes, Gene Peters is involved in the Fieldstone one with Mark Hanson for a Villa Project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Keen?
Yes, thanks. I, I wanted to understand something about the conditions that were waived. The first one had to do with the trail system, and it had to do with like the split from the east side or from the north side of the street to the south side of the street at Abigail Lane. I'm just wondering why that is being placed in a GDP for a specific product, project? Is that something that's being committed through this project, or why is that it there?
We, as the development team, pushed that, because there's always been this lack of pathway out there. And we knew if we didn't come up with something now, we could move forward with our development, probably pay a development fee for that path that we wouldn't build, but may never get built. And so it's something from day one that Joe Powers, being out there, said, we need a path. It's ridiculous. People are trying to walk with their kids on this road, and it's, people are driving too fast. So we've been pushing to figure out, how do we get from where it ends at Stonegate Court over to the bridge? And so that was through multiple iterations, discussions with the meetings. And the condition that's still in here from Public Works states that we've got a plan that would allow it, and that was what was agreed to, is that we bring it into the property to Abigail Lane, and then we can bring it to the south side, because we cannot run it in front of the stone barn site right now.
Right, right. And I do understand it, and I appreciate what you're trying to do with it. What I'm trying to delineate, is it part of this project? Or is it something that's planned and done sometime in the future, if and if and if?
We want to do it as part of this project, the first phase of the project.
You do, okay.
We want to. Hopefully, hopefully we can work everything out, because there's some components that aren't necessarily the developer's responsibility.
That, that's what I'm concerned about here, that we make it look like it's being done, and then it won't get done, and I'm concerned about that.
And, and that's why it's one of the conditions in the final letter in the GDP, is so that we don't miss that opportunity. And so the developers are going to be responsible for what's in front of the property they're developing. So there's a good chunk of it that would be taken care of in the first phase. It's just how do we get the gaps that aren't part of the developer's responsibility?
Okay, yeah. I, I just want to make sure no one would think that since it's drawn in here, that it's part of the project being paid for as part of the project, or being approved through this meeting.
Right. It's not part of this approval of the meeting, and that's, I think, the language in the condition is very clear that it's a conceptually acceptable location. And we have to figure out how we're going to get the funding, what portion the developer's not responsible for.
Okay, good. I, again, I like that language better, that which portion you're doing versus it's unsolved. Because I think there's a bunch of it's unsolved.
Yeah, we want to make sure that our plan includes that construction. And so if, for some reason, there isn't funding, the city has to go get it, and it's a delay or something like that, at least we know that we got it built and locations.
Yeah, and I appreciate the idea of trying to make sure the path connects, because I think it is an important thing for the area there. And I, and I hope it works out, but I wanted, I just want to make sure it's clear that it's not, it's not part of this that'll be delayed or anything like that. It's still to be solved.
One of the reasons we also asked that we get some language in this now is because we're also working with Olmsted County. Olmsted County owns the right of way, and so we have to have agreements with them, and they've been agreement of this concept.
They are, okay, because I was under the impression earlier on that they liked the idea of doing it and had no idea how to do it.
They, they like the concept of it being completed by somebody else and not paying for it.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get out in there. Okay, all right. Another one of the ones, the parkland dedication. Is this solved now that we do know where the park placement on the, on the general development plan is? The dedication and it's committed and accepted?
With part of the decision that the pathway will be within the property, where we can enact in from our Stonegate currently, we have to extend it across to additional properties. When it comes in, we're going to have to make another opening within that stone wall. But from there, we can run a path up to where the park department wanted to land. Or we can do a pathway just inside the stone fence that'll get to the, the park property.
Okay, good. I, I was glad to see it there. I knew, I knew earlier on when I was involved, it wasn't solved yet. Different thing here, on this discussion with the connectivity index. I mean, I, I got comfortable with that, that there's a lot of topography things here blocking that, so I thought that was waived. But I thought I heard someone saying there's only one entryway. I thought there was two entryways on this, on the, on the.
We do, we have two.
Okay, so I must have heard something that I misread. I thought there was, we were over a hundred lots with only one entryway, and that, that would be a.
We actually can only have fifty units off of one access, so secondary access has to be in there. That's another condition in here, but that's totally separate from the connectivity index.
Yeah, yeah, totally separate, but I did see in the drawing, it looks like two different in and out.
Yes, essentially our development is just a horseshoe connecting back to Mailwood Road, and then we have some spur streets for making the desirable lots.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campion?
Yeah, so you got the, you got the pathway one. Private roadways is another one, and then you said the connectivity index was already solved. That was the, the ones I wanted to follow up on. I actually got my questions answered kind of as I waited, so, okay, I don't have anything else.
Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. To address the residents' concerns about sidewalks, so there will not be sidewalks with these homes?
Well, there'll be a pathway that's run along all of Mailwood Road. And from that, the loop road would have a, we call a fog line, and so they still have a walking path area on the loop.
So, I'm sorry if I missed that. Okay, so safety has been addressed for people to have, okay. And then you said it could, you were originally thinking what, two hundred and fifty, like incredible amount, and then you went down to a hundred and twenty-nine? Is, is hard to get more density once you start building. Has there been thought of, of even like, I don't know, increased density with, you know, mixed housing or anything else that would accommodate growing, you know, our growing community?
This is one of the locations, as much as like the infill, we would do as highest density possible. There is a sewer constraint, so even if we came with a plan that was perfect, everybody loved. Um, so even if we came with a plan that was perfect, everybody loved it, had 400 houses on it, uh, we wouldn't be able to do it because of the sewer constraint. And there's some bottleneck that's I think from Mailwood or, um, Bamber Valley, uh, but it really becomes a bottleneck, I believe, at the Soldier's Field Golf Course. And that's going to require, uh, millions of dollars investment by the city. Um, the stormwater or sanitary sewer fee that this development will pay will, will contribute to that future fix. But it's not going to, uh, fix all the problems. And the issue is, so this, this is kind of a dead, at the end of the line. And so more infrastructure in this site isn't going to allow for future development further down the road. We're, we're running out of essentially land the city can develop that's south of the river along this drainage corridor.
Okay, and just, and just to clarify, I mean, I, I'm really, um, there will be no impact on the wetlands? The environment you've, you've looked at, um, I, I'm just, you know, worried, of course, having been there many times, it's just such a beautiful, you know, with the environment not being impacted by, um, too many houses or, you know, having the right amount of housing at the highest density that's, you know, without impacting the environment, I think is really important. So just to, there was no impact, right?
Yeah, our, our grading plan that we've laid out has been to make sure that we have more than enough buffer and totally avoid impacts to wetlands. And that includes the watershed, how water gets to those wetlands currently. We have factored that into the preliminary grading plans. And, um, one thing I didn't talk about is if you look at the, um, layout that had lots on it, um, the streets, the cul-de-sacs, they're oversized. And so that all the water for all the houses that are going around the cul-de-sac will all tip to the center. And that'll allow for infiltration of the water quality volume component that's required. And then the excess water would, if it didn't infiltrate, is going to be able to continue down to where we have some larger water features that are, um, not necessary, like a standard stormwater pond, because of the fact our water quality volume will be treated within the site. But we have, I think it was eight different locations, uh, for doing the water quality volume to split it up. Because you, you don't get as good a water quality volume or water quality treatment if you try to push it all into one location, then you get all of the sediment there. So by breaking it down to each one of those little cul-de-sac areas, we're actually kind of, you know, making little pods of treatment area, so.
Okay, thank you.
That will be more discussed at the preliminary plat, so.
Mr. McGee, oh, did you want to respond as well?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to note that we do have a couple of, uh, conditions of approval as part of the GDP, uh, staff report, uh, that requires that, um, all lots within the shore land zone, uh, will meet the minimum standards for an agricultural river or, uh, obtain a flood protection permit or a shoreline protection permit, uh, uh, from, uh, the DNR prior to, uh, uh, submitting preliminary plat. And then also, uh, with regard to the flood plain, uh, they, if there are, is any modification of the flood plain, they will be required to, um, uh, provide compensatory storage, uh, for the development. Uh, so those items, this is, uh, the very first step in, in the development process. Uh, we're kind of setting the table and outlining what needs to be done, um, as those, uh, as this project comes through, uh, they will be required to do that with the preliminary plat. Um, and also I wanted to touch base, uh, I think, uh, most of the wall will be left intact. Uh, there will be a couple of places that, uh, they would need to penetrate it for the, for the street and also one place for, uh, the, um, uh, the pathway. Uh, so I just wanted to touch base on that as well, so, um, but, uh, as far as, uh, the density is concerned for this site, um, uh, and the, um, R1 six allows up for, you know, 6,000 square foot lots. I, I believe in the UDC will be even less than that, uh, in the future. So, um, uh, you know, generally they're, they're proposing, uh, 70 to 80 foot wide lots. Um, uh, so this is probably, uh, much more than what would be otherwise entitled under the R1 force, R1 zoning district. Um, but yeah, that's, that's all I had to note, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Palmer?
You just heard what he said, you're in agreement with that and we're, we're, you're cool with that, correct?
We're good with all of that.
Okay. The, the question for you is, we've got a commercial development there, um, then doing banquet right now and do that kinds of things. You're going to have 110 or 129 homes. Uh, how are you going to handle the noise complaints and how are we going to avoid the noise complaints coming to the city council?
Well, luckily Joe Powers already has a, uh, plan in place. And from the talking with all the neighbors, it sounds like it works well. He has everything shut down by 11 o'clock. I think his music and stuff ends before that. But, um, we're going to be actually placing some berms on the north side of the Stone Barns facility. And so with the plantings and the berms, that'll help take in some of the noise and light that would be coming from the commercial events. And, uh, the nice thing is he's there, he's established. And so they will know before they move in that that is the neighborhood.
Just to be clear, I mean, he can sell it at any time. And, and I'm going to end up with 129 houses there. I don't need to have people complaining to me about noises at 11:05 in the, in the, in the evening. Um, and so is there going to be, the, the berm is already set, is it, is it a decibel level that you're going to attain? Or, or we're not going to go over to that side of the property?
So, so there is actually decibel level. So then we went out there and actually tried to do some testing and stuff and we never got close to, to getting to that decibel level. But there's always times of year and certain reasons that resonates better. But, uh, uh, that's something that Joe's very, uh, aware of. And, um, that's something that's going to be making sure that his operations don't become a problem for essentially the people buying from him, so.
Okay, well, I don't need in three years to have 129 people come to me and saying it's noisy and biting.
So, so I believe that it's actually part of, uh, I don't know if it's a conditional use permit or restricted development, but this, the, he has an agreement with the city. And that includes some of the things that ours operation in decibel level. And I think he may have actually implemented things that are even more restrictive just because it works well with his business model.
Thank you.
Great, councilmember Kirkpatrick, anything? Okay, otherwise a motion?
Uh, I'd like to move approval of the general development plan CD 2022 dash 001 GDP, known as Preserve Amaywood with seven conditions.
Second?
Okay, councilmember Keen?
So there have been fairly well attended, uh, development information meetings, uh, with the responsive development team. Um, there was also a follow-up meeting that also was well attended. Um, my, my sense is that the residents that are out there close by are somewhat disappointed they're going to lose their farm fields. But I think they're also, uh, pleased with the responsiveness of the development team to this point. Uh, and they are, uh, again, very focused on these connectivity trails and making sure that would be a good quality of life thing out there on mail. So, um, so I, I think based on that, I want to, uh, move approval of the project.
Okay, any other comments? Alright, go ahead, councilmember Kirkpatrick.
I just spoke a little earlier about how our city is growing exponentially and we really can't, um, track it, um, the whole county. But with that growth and with the development, um, being born here and seeing the changes that the city has gone through, um, and what we've become, an international city of health known globally. Um, this development, I actually think dishonors the heritage of this site. And it's really unfortunate that people keep bringing up the fact that this is a national historically registered property. That really means nothing, that has no teeth, has zero teeth. What would have teeth to preserve the history of our community is a local historic preservation ordinance. So when we continue to banter around these terms and continue to watch pieces of our history, of Rochester's history going away, I, I just really find it criminal. Um, I, I, I trust community development. I, I trust Public Works in, in what they've gone through to assess this site for, um, future impacts. We just discussed, um, in the study session earlier, the SWIP. And, um, I'd actually like to hear, um, if the current development of this site would actually meet future levels of what we're trying to develop with the comprehensive surface water management plan. I, I don't know that it would. I don't know that these wider roads, these, um, a- additional extra impermeable surfaces, despite the planned infiltration that they have, is actually going to be something that will benefit our streams and rivers, um, that this portion of the Zumbro flows into. Uh, I'm concerned about drinking water in the future. And I don't think remu- removing what is really good agricultural land into an elite privileged housing situation is really the direction of, um, of where development should be going for our city that so many people need housing in. And, uh, I wonder if Charlie and Will would actually be rolling over in their graves right now. And that's my comment.
Alright, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And I'll, I will abstain. Alright, we are moving on to item G6. This is a public hearing for our 2023 through 27 transit development plan. And we have Bradley Bobbitt here. And Ms. Zhang, are you presenting as well?
Good evening, um, council president Carlson and members of the council. My name is Yeh Shang. I'm the Transit and Parking Systems Manager in Public Works, um, Rochester Public Transit. And we also have Bradley Bobbitt here from our transit team, um, also presenting. Um, and the hearing tonight, uh, is for the transit development plan, otherwise known as or referred to as the TDP. It's a five-year plan that is required by the Federal Transit Administration for us to update every five years. It provides guidelines and, um, policies and direction for us for our public, um, transportation services. Um, it takes into consideration, as you see here, um, different plans that we have in the city and in the region. And our city, um, strategic priorities and, and initiatives and, uh, what it looks at, um, and then what it impacts. So it includes our fixed route, which are our, uh, big buses that you see out there. Our paratransit, which is the, um, zips for our disabled that are unable to ride our fixed routes. And then it also includes new initiatives, um, in this plan that we haven't tried before, uh, piloting microtransit. And then of course, preparing ourselves for the BRT, the link, um, in the next, uh, um, five to six years. And so it includes all that. Um, in the last year and a half, we've come to you to, uh, present and give you an update on our transit development plan. Also in the last few years, you have heard, um, from other transit team or other city teammates come and, um, present about the link, um, your approvals for agreements and applications to this, for the small stars application for Federal Transit Administration. And that's all for the construction piece of it. Um, moving forward into this next five years, the link as it comes closer and closer into reality, we're going to need to start preparing for the operations of it. And it will be operated by Rochester Public Transit. And so starting next year, you will start hearing from us in regards to the operations and how we will plan to support it. Um, so the transit development plan will help in that, um, providing our guidelines and includes, like I mentioned, all the different services that we have. Um, I'll turn it over to Bradley to present the details.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yeh, uh, council president, council members. I'll try to go quickly, I know it's already late. Um, thanks for staying up late on a school night. Um, so we'll be covering basically how the update to the TDP tries to align with new council principles, uh, our strategic plan and then the financial sustainability of it. Uh, we've been working on this project for quite a while, um, since June of last year. Uh, we also have our, uh, project manager from our consultant, Chelsea Hendrickson, um, with Kimberly Horn, who's on virtually to help answer questions. Um, and they've been helping us throughout this whole process. We had two rounds of public engagement that I wanted to highlight for you all. Um, the first round in 2021, we really tried to get feedback on how we were doing and then priorities from the community for what they'd like to see changed or improved. Uh, and then in the second round of engagement, we took those priorities and feedback, uh, and formed them into service ideas for improvement, uh, and tried to get specific feedback on those. Uh, we got over 800 responses via surveys. We held focus groups. Um, we had open houses, both virtual and in person. And I'd like to highlight that we had a community working group of 10 Rochester residents that really put in a lot of extra time, helping us to reach their neighbors and talk to them about the differing considerations of how transit is operated in Rochester. Uh, we tried to keep this, uh, new plan pretty short, uh, compared to the last one was about 380 pages. Um, and to do that, we had technical memos, which are up on the project site right now that have a lot more detailed information. Um, and you'll see that those were referenced in the main plan. The new plan is about 73 pages, so it'll be a little easier to get through in your packet. Um, as far as how the new plan aligns with city priorities, we looked to current city plans, DMC, ROCOG. Uh, an example is planning to succeed. Uh, we're looking at beginning to implement the primary transit network, um, which is in the map on the lower left there. Uh, and then for the strategic, uh, priorities and focus areas, an example of affordable living, uh, we analyzed how, uh, demographic, demographics have changed in town where people who are living, who might be more likely to be transit dependent, such as people with low incomes or no access to a private automobile and make sure that our services are accessible for those folks. Uh, we also updated our mission goals and we put the city's strategic priorities right in the mission, uh, the new mission. And then we tried to align our goals. Uh, these are just titles for those goals. Each of them has a description in the plan, um, as well as strategies for how we would like to achieve that and performance measures, uh, for us to monitor progress. Uh, an example for service quality, the description is provide high-quality transit service that attracts and retains riders. Um, an example of a strategy is to implement, uh, service and infrastructure improvements that help us, uh, be on time and reliable. And then the performance measure is on-time performance. So pretty straightforward, um, but that's all contained within the plan. And each of those individual goals, uh, has multiple measures and strategies under them. Uh, this is material that was presented to you before, but just as a reminder, these are feedback themes we heard from the public, uh, and from you all, as well as our partners, on ways we could improve fixed route service. As you said, those are the 40-foot buses and now the 60-foot electric buses running around, um, running the regular routes. Uh, some of the major themes were people were very interested in increased frequency, more service at off-peak periods, and then reducing the need to transfer downtown. We came up with two major scenario or two large scenarios for implement, or for trying to achieve those, uh, improvements. One is a cost neutral scenario where we're trying to implement improvements that are responsive without really having to change our operating budget. Um, there's a few, uh, kind of high-level improvements, such as having routes that operate weekdays, evenings, weekends, holidays, as opposed to having separate sets of routes. Um, others listed there, this would really only change our service hours about 3%. And these would be implemented incrementally, um, over a few years. Uh, that's the implementation plan that's at the end of the plan, uh, so that folks wouldn't be hit with a lot of change really quickly. We also have an expansion scenario where we look at expanding our service hours up to a third. Um, and we're getting more into then increasing frequency, um, expanding service to places that people are interested in, like the airport, as well as routes outside of downtown that provide a cross-town connection, um, reducing that need to transfer downtown, uh, to get from one side of town to the other. Uh, we would implement these as ridership supports. RPT uses fairs to support its operations as well as state and federal grants. And so as we get enough ridership, we would be able to incrementally, uh, implement these. And then we'd also be looking, as Yeh mentioned, at piloting microtransit. One thing I'd like to note is each of these routes also have a plan for how they'd integrate, a preliminary plan for how they'd integrate with Bus Rapid Transit Service, uh, which will have a pretty large impact to how we run buses on Second Street, particularly in through downtown. Uh, cities over 200,000 in population have to do what's called a Title VI Equity Analysis, uh, looking at their, uh, how changes to their service impact groups protected under the Civil Rights Act. We're not that large, but we did the evaluation anyways, um, our consultant did. And we looked, basically we're looking at the proportion of change for those protected groups, uh, versus non. Um, and the index you see here, if we're above point eight, it's considered not disproportionate impacts. Um, so that's comparing how much service would change. This is looking at our expansion scenarios. This would be implementing everything. And so one thing to note here is we're looking at really how much is service increasing for these, for these groups. Uh, feedback themes we heard for paratransit, the largest one was service, uh, reliability and on-time performance. Uh, we also heard about communications. Um, while this doesn't have, while paratransit doesn't have routes, uh, that we can kind of tinker with, uh, we do have different strategies we would like to see implemented over the five-year period of the plan to get at improving system reliability, improving communication, looking at, uh, technology improvements, um, and our performance management processes. For the financial portion of the plan, financial sustainability, uh, we looked at our cost drivers, our expected ridership, um, operating revenues over, uh, the period of this plan. Um, in 2022, we are expecting, we are. In 2022, we are expecting, we are projecting a shortfall, but that cost will be covered by CARES or federal funding, which was provided to bridge the gap during the pandemic. This, these figures do not include link, that process, planning process has been happening concurrently and has its own financial planning happening. We're making sure that the rest of our services can integrate with it and will all work together. We did look at our fares, and we did not think that we need to change our fare structure, increase rates to support our service. There will be capital needs. Mostly, it's what we already have on our CIP, replacing buses, bus stop improvements. There are other things looking to the future, such as creating more detailed plan for transitioning more of our fleet to zero emissions, maintenance facilities for those vehicles, and implementing the primary transit network. And then the other major considerations are organization and staffing in terms of how we manage all this. We compared our staffing levels based on how much service we provide, so either the number of hours or the number of buses we have out there at our maximum service. And we compared that to peer agencies here in Minnesota and around the nation, as well as national averages. And what we found is that currently, we, compared to those averages, we have fewer staff than our peers. So if we were to staff up to be on par with those, we'd have two to three additional staff for our current service. And then as we expand in the future, we would need more city administrative staff, facility maintenance staff, along with that service expansion. The staffing for First Transit, who's our contracted operator, is managed by the contract we keep with them, which I think Yeha could speak to more if you have any questions on. But I hope that was quick enough, and not too quick, though. But we ask you to consider adopting the resolution, and I think it's time for comments and questions.
So it's actually time for the public, the public hearing. So we have, just to run it by my counsel, thank you so much, we'll call you back up in a little while. We have about 40 minutes signed up of public comment. Would you like to take a brief break? Or, okay, let's take a five-minute break. Thank you, everybody, for waiting so patiently. We will get going on comments by everyone for your patience. I know you've all been just back there waiting and want to be sure that people have an opportunity to speak. So as with every item, I'll continue to go back and forth between my sheet here and if anybody is joining virtually to make sure everybody has a chance. And unlike our public comment, this doesn't have a time period, a time limit, but we do encourage you to keep your comments brief. And if you're saying similar messages to those that have spoken before you, we ask you to keep those extra concise and try to build on one another. Okay, so Ms. Harden, you are up first. You have five minutes, and go ahead.
Thank you. Paula Harden, disability rights activist. I was deeply involved in the 2017 Master Plan Development and was the exclusive attendee at a meeting at Mayo High School and spoke at length with Brian Law for like two hours. And I've subsequently continued to discuss paratransit issues and wheelchair accessibility and routes and all of this stuff and problems that I've had with the current ZIPS service with the gentleman in charge of it, whose name just escaped me as soon as I thought of it. Anyway, so I think that this plan is, I'm sure, as is always the case, you always vote for the stuff you're given. But I think that you could vote for this, but then ask them to prepare a separate plan specifically related to accessibility, because this one does not include 90% of the problems that I brought to their attention. For example, paratransit requires a reservation a day in advance. You don't know you're going to need a doctor appointment a day in advance. If you need to get to a doctor the same day, they do try to do something for you, and I was successful. But I think that I was successful because I'm very vocal about this, and I know everybody knows that I am. And other people that I've heard from were not accommodated. And I also think there are not enough buses. And that brings me to the overarching problem with this plan is that it doesn't act sort of strategically. It doesn't say, what are all the public buildings offering programs in town? And do we have buses to all of them, fixed route buses? For example, the Olmsted History Center, which is just down the street, West Circle Drive from me. And in order to take the bus there, it would take an hour and 32 minutes, two bus stops, and I'd have to walk 1.6 miles to get from the last fixed route to the History Center, which is a bit further south than what I, the nearest thing I could get Google Maps to target, which was the Benedictine Madonna Meadows. And that's just impossible for me. And yet, the ADA paratransit is expensive, even though 80% of the coverage cost is covered by the federal and the state funding. And Fairbox revenue is a miniscule part of paratransit. I also would say, in a strategic plan, I would have to have a lot more review of the concept of fare-free, because people with disabilities invariably are living in enforced poverty, because you have to be impoverished to receive Medicaid and/or food stamps at different percentages and values. And our property taxes are discounted, but then the discount decreases, as I mentioned earlier. So it would be better, since all of our fixed route buses are wheelchair accessible, that I should be able to take a regular fixed route. And either way, abled people need a fixed route to all public facilities offering services and programming. Elderly people, people who have bad vision, like me, I can't, I really don't drive at night anymore. And yet, I couldn't necessarily get paratransit to take me to an event at the Olmsted History Center, A, because even though it's in the range. Is that, am I already done almost?
Yep, you're out of time.
Okay, well, in conclusion, please ask for a specific strategic plan to implement paratransit and/or fixed bus transit.
All right, thank you, Ms. Harden. Appreciate your comments. Moving on to the next person, Adri Gomez. Adri.
Hi, Adri. Good evening, City Council President and City Council. I am Adri Gomez. We are city bus drivers, and we are representing our coworkers that couldn't be here. We are here asking you to take the public transit system in-house, to eliminate the subcontracting of the management services to foreign, private-for-profit companies, to ensure stability for employees that are the backbone of transit and keep citizens' tax dollars in the city of Rochester. Currently, RPT is being operated under a private transit contractor, First Transit. Obviously, First Transit is in the business to profit. First Transit was sold in January of 2021 to an equity liquidation company based in Sweden. EQT is not in the transportation industry, but allowed First Transit to remain as Rochester's transit management company in order to receive profits through their contract with Rochester. On October 26 of '22, First Transit's North American properties were sold to Transdev, which is a French-based international private sector company which operates public transport. First Transit's contract was extended to expire in 2026. However, Transdev is a major competitor, therefore obviously will not allow First Transit to continue contract with the city. The sale is expected to be finalized by the end of January 2023. Why? Why has the city of Rochester been paying a private company a profit percentage every month to manage our public transit system for the last years, 10 years, with taxpayer dollars? RPT is not public, but it is a private, for-profit, run business, just as Transdev is and will be if allowed to take over. Now is the perfect opportunity to bring RPT in-house as true public transport service for the taxpayers' citizens. The city owns all assets of the transit service already. All personnel would remain in place when the city brings our transit system in-house. All individuals necessary to facilitate the changes that they were talking about earlier are already in place to handle the TDP and other plans, whom the city is already paying for. They pay for us. No change in operation whatsoever. And the positive, eliminate the hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars sent to Sweden or France. Dollars much better spent on bringing the transit in-house. First Transit staff will not admit to the city that there are any operational problems. Why? They won't jeopardize their contract, period. Over the last 10 years, approximately 90% of that time, transit service has been understaffed. We are continually, day by day, called upon to work overtime in order for First Transit to meet their responsibility of managing the contract for Rochester. According to a labor ratio analysis, current staffing levels are below what is necessary to support service now, let alone the addition of rapid transit plan expansion or a microtransit service in the future. Now is the perfect time to bring the operation in-house. It's time for the six individuals in the city's transit department and the city manager, to whom, by the way, are paid over $930,000 annually, to please step up, weigh the benefits, and once and for all, make us true public transit system. Please, let's make our city greater and move it together as one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Adam Mosby, come on up.
Good evening, City Council President, City Council members. I wanted to thank the ones that have reached out and has been involved in conversations with us. We've just had a couple that has been engaging. I really appreciate it. Thank you for stepping up and sending emails and text messages that I personally got. I really appreciate it. I don't have a lot. Adri covered it very, very well. I just noticed in some of the other hearings that we were going through, while we were waiting for our turn, I heard the city council speak a lot about efficiency. I believe Ms. Dennis talked about it and several others. Yet, we're spending money on private, for-profit companies for public transit. One, that's all I had to say. Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you for the engagement from those that have been engaged in this issue. Once again, it really means a lot to us. We do a lot of work on the behalf of city, of the city of Rochester. We are the face of Rochester. We haul many, many of those that visit Rochester to grocery shopping, to their appointments. And we do so largely without complaint. And so we would ask y'all to honor us with this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Just making sure there isn't anyone joining virtually who would like to speak. It doesn't look like there is, but star nine or raise hand function. All right, Casey McGregor.
Hello. I promise this is my last time tonight. I wonder how many of you here have been to Europe? On the council, mayor, staff, have you traveled abroad? I know for a fact some of you have experienced things in other countries. I have been fortunate enough to have some of the same experiences. I have friends that are in Europe, and a couple of years ago, I jumped on a plane and went and stayed with them. I had a very interesting experience in Europe. I was in Amsterdam, Belgium, and Germany. Because I was with local people, I got to do things, like go into German kindergarten and drive around with my friends, Mikel and Annabelle. They always pointed out their history. This was right here in Cox Haven, North Shore Sea. This is where we helped the Jews escape the Nazis. Every turn we took, they spoke about their history. Every street walked down, the history was so important. So I'm saying this because I'm wondering how important Rochester's history is. If we all travel and we experience other history, how important is our own? Can we put the History Center on the bus route? Has the city to find some kind of value with our own history? And putting things like the History Center, Corey Hill, and the Nature Center on the bus route is one of the simplest things the city could do to honor our history. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sean Kettlecamp, are you around? All right.
My name is Sean Kettlecamp. When I went to work at the History Center of Olmsted County in the summer of 2016, I would, even though I was doing research and my other duties, I was very often asked to work at the front desk. And numberless calls would come in saying, I'm at the, I'm at the public library downtown. What bus do I take to get to the History Center? And at the very beginning, I said, oh, let me give you your, get your phone number. I'll, I'll find out and I'll call you back, only to find out the bus doesn't come out there. And I think that's something that needs to be rectified. The downtown is emptied out, and everything is moved out to West Circle Drive, but there isn't a bus that goes up for people to enjoy their favorite restaurants and all of the things that have moved out of downtown and moved out northwest. We want the History Center to have the city bus come there. Thank you.
All right, Joe Christensen, are you still here?
Good evening, members of the board. Joe Christensen, I guess I looked at that, what I saw. And to me, it just kind of doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. It's like they have a solution, they're trying to create a problem. I know that the, the stop and rides work really well. The parking rides, like out in Walmart North and IBM, that makes a lot of sense. People park their cars, but that's only like in the morning and then at the end of the day. So, you know, we were doing some sign waving during the election season. We just kind of noticed that the buses that go up and down Broadway and these other corners were at, were pretty empty. Pretty empty, but you know, I do see a lot of cars at these parking rides. So to me, the parking rides make a lot of sense. If there's a, you know, disabled person that needs to go up to the Olmsted County History Center, well, I don't know, maybe that could be something that could be worked out one day a week, something. But I don't think it's something we can do every day, every hour. It's just not pragmatic or practical. I would say that our demographics are changing. It does seem like we, there's some kind of orchestrated movement to bring people from the worst parts of America and put them here because we don't have enough diversity. And they think that they'll become Dr. Ben Carson if they grow up in Rochester, Minnesota or something. But I would say that, yeah, crime's going up, and people are not wanting to go downtown, partially because they don't want to be around the element that's around downtown. Rochester, we've got a lot of homeless people now, you know? And some people think the reason why we have a homeless problem is because we have Dorothy Day Center, we have the Salvation Army Hotel, we've got now the Landing. And we've got a lot of kind of things that lure homeless people. Homeless people tend to ride buses. And that's what keeps some of the people who actually pay the fare from riding the bus, because they don't pay the fare, they just get on the bus, if that makes any sense. Now, that's talking about my experience of living in Los Angeles for eight years. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hargot, online, would you like to speak on item G6?
Yes, I would. I just want to, I concur with the two speakers that I think the History Center should, I don't understand why it's not on the bus route already. So it should be added to the bus route. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Mr. Wayne Gannaway, come on up.
Hello, Wayne Gannaway, Executive Director of the History Center of Olmsted County. You know, listening to the earlier discussion about the development, it sounds like we have a lot of cars, maybe too many cars in Rochester. And what we're asking at the History Center is not for more cars, but really just what might seemingly be a modest proposal of a bus route that would take people, they could leave their cars, or maybe they don't have cars and they could still access their history.
Hey, babe, how's it going?
Mr. Hargot, you're, thank you.
Yeah, so, and the other thing towards that, I would just like to remind the city council that equity is one of the important principles of the city, and that is something that we stand for as well, both in terms of access. We are part of the Museums for All program, which means we don't charge admission to people who receive food assistance, and we're not reimbursed for that. But oftentimes, those folks might also not have a car. And so, once again, you know, we're denying them access to public humanities, their own histories. So things like civic literacy, like our suffrage exhibit, things like agricultural literacy, the work we're doing at the Stopple Farmstead. And as we develop the Stopple Farmstead, we're going to be finishing the Smokehouse this spring, restoring it. We're going to be starting on the barn a year from now. Those are additional amenities that are part of everyone's humanities and everyone's public history. And to throw up another obstacle of not having public access, not having a bus route to it, only makes it more difficult for people to be entirely part of the community. And that's what we want to bring, is helping people belong to the community. That's what our mission is. And so, it's, we feel like a modest proposal to bring a route to the History Center, at least put it in the plan, and then let's test it out. So that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gannaway. Mr. or Dr. Scanlon, come on up.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies.
Five minutes.
My name is Paul Scanlon, if I know a number of you. I just thought I'd bring a little prop. This is a book called Joseph A. Leonard's History of Olmsted County. It's arguably the best reference for learning the history of our county, the early history of our county, published in 1910, so it's 112 years old. This book is out of print. You can't buy it for any price, but you can get it at the History Center, and it's readily available there along with many other precious artifacts that have been collected over the nearly 100-year history of the History Center. So I too request you to seriously consider adding access to the History Center for those who lack private transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Barry Skolnick, come on up. I hope I'm not missing anyone. I'll ask after this if I've missed anybody.
Hi, all. Nice to see your happy faces. Anyway, I just, I've been trying to get a bus to the History Center and also to Quarry Hill ever since I was the Chair of the Advisory on Transit, about, what, five and a half years ago. Back then and now, I think it's important to allow the city, as it grows and becomes a better city, to sort of do what other cities do, which is have public buses to public museums. The idea that we can't do that to educate our people and our citizens who can't afford perhaps the buses, and we want to discourage the use of cars to some extent. And I think it does that when you actually have buses that go to the History Center and to Quarry Hill. I think the point is that there's a program specifically from the federal government that allows people who have lower incomes to go to the History Center, and they can't get there because there's no bus. So in terms of our goals, we really, I think, should care about equity, and this is definitely an equity argument. Like we added, for example, bike lanes to allow people to go around town. We didn't wait until we had a lot of people driving bicycles. We actually assume and we're hoping that they will. So let's hope that people will go to the History Center and to Quarry Hill. Let's allow people who need that kind of transportation to get there. In other cities, like was referenced before, like in Europe, people actually, the cities make sure they have public buses to go to their educational and their nature centers. They don't just sort of ignore them. They make sure that that's there. And so I'm just asking you to please, in terms of equity and in terms of just culture and improving our services, to please allow a bus to go there. And, you know, try it. Just give it a chance and allow the bus to finally go to the History Center. I mean, it really deserves it, and it helps the History Center expand, and it will help Quarry Hill eventually expand because more people will go there, and people will know it's on a route, and it'll help our tourists also, who come here and our patients who want something to do downtown, to go from there somewhere else in their spare time. It gives them another option. It gives us, it makes the city a better draw. So I urge you to please have a bus that goes to these areas and put it in the five-year plan. Doesn't have to be this year, but incorporate it in somehow and ask that the staff find a way to include this as a matter of equity and just improving the services to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So did I miss anybody, or is there anyone who didn't sign up? All right, come on up.
John Kreisel. I feel honored to speak here today. It appears as though maybe I'm going to be the last one. And those that came before me, I regard as friends. I can't thank those that spoke enough as relates to trying to pay attention to not only our history, but to offer something to people that choose to visit this community. I've been downtown for 42 years, and during that length of time, I would say that the million and a half people that come to the city of Rochester, visiting the city of Rochester, have gotten more frustrated and don't know what to do with their time. They seem to end up at the library, or they end up at my store and ask, "What do we do with our time?" I say, "Do you have a car?" "No, we don't have a car. Why do you ask?" I say, "Well, if you had a car, then I would direct you to some other places other than the city of Rochester, because there's not a great deal to see." That said, in my opinion, it is essential that we pay attention to the visitors that come to this community and to other people that don't have cars, that therefore their mobility is compromised so that anyone that wants to go to the History Center can get to the History Center. I hope that you incorporate this, whether it's over the next five-year plan. I'm not particularly sure when you're going to activate that, but please give it all your consideration so that we can add a fabric and a different color to those that want to get to the History Center and learn. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else that wanted to speak who hasn't had a chance? All right, we'll close the public hearing and invite questions from my colleagues for staff. Okay, Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, I have a question for the city administrator. As far as the contract that we have with the bus service, is it not good till three more years or four more years?
Councilmember Palmer, councilmembers, the contract that we currently have that is for maintenance, some administration and the bus operators, is good through December 31st, 2026. And they have been delivering on their contract and have notified us that they would expect to continue to deliver on their contract.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I'm a little, I don't know, needing to know a little bit more. Why are we not being local here with our contract? But what is the reasoning behind using an outside company?
I would suggest that Ms. Sean come forward and answer that, but we have been contracting for the service for quite some time, and that was after study and is a highly effective way of providing transit services. Many cities do so.
So, okay, yeah, please, thank you. Councilmember Dennis, councilmembers. So we, I've been here three, four years, and as far as I know, Rochester Public Transit have always contracted these services. We provide, city staff provide the administrative piece and the oversight of it, the operations and the maintenance of the vehicles, and the operations day-to-day are provided by our contractor. And first off, I just want to say thank you very much to our drivers. We really appreciate them. They are the face of our, that our customers interact with, and they do a really good job. We've done really well with First Transit, so thank you very much for their services. As far as like different models, this contract runs in 2026. To switch it, to become in-house, would take many, many planning steps to bring it in-house. We don't have the support staff, like even just the HR or the personnel staffing to support the number of drivers that we would have to bring onboard, the hiring, the, you know, staff overturn. So just that piece alone, we don't have that type of resources. And if we were to bring it in-house, we'd have to start planning for that, not just within transit, but within the city support as well. So that's just one example, but to really transition over, it's going to take time. And I would say that with the sale of First Transit, I mean, we've reached out to the leadership over there and management over there, and they have confirmed that, assured us that there will be no changes to local management and that the day-to-day operations will not change. They are committed to continuing to deliver the services as they have been before. We're really good partnerships with them in collaboration with improving our services as we move forward, the different types of technologies that we're working with them on, the service planning that they provide. We collaborate on that. And so it's been a really good working relationship. Not to say that if we were to bring it in-house, it would take time and planning. So, so we, how much does it cost? I mean, you're looking at staffing, but I mean, I imagine it's, I mean, would it, I don't know. I'm going to say I think it's important to look at this contract situation again. Just because we've always done something doesn't mean we should always do something. You know, we need to be really innovative city. We need to be, you've heard the statement where the new normal can't be the old normal. You know, we need to be better. And so I would encourage, I'll maybe look at motions in a minute, but doing a study to see what it would take to come in-house. And I have one more question. So I know DMC has a lot of, you know, regulations, and one of them is to meet unmet needs of our society, like what does patients do when they're not at Mayo? And try to find ways of creating things to do. I Googled what places, you know, things to do in Rochester, and it's very sad. So I do see Quarry Hill and the History Center as, on all these searches, every time you say places to go and do. Would it be feasible for DMC to use DMC money? Because they can't do, of course, services, but they could build the bus stations at Quarry Hill and at History Center using money that is earmarked or, you know, for that specific means?
Council President Carlson, if I may. Well, EA is truly the brains behind the transit system. I think I'm probably the best person to answer that question instead of EA. DNC dollars are, I think it's been provided to the council, are dictated by state legislation. It's very prescriptive in how those dollars can be spent. It is bound by a district geographically, how those dollars can be spent. And so Quarry Hill and the other facility.
History Center.
Pardon me. History Center, thank you. Such a difficult word to remember, right? The History Center are not within those boundaries.
But isn't it true that they changed the boundaries based on need? Like they didn't have the, you know, when looking at Rapid Transit? I believe, and I-
Boundary amendment would be required, would require action by multiple bodies, including the council and the DNC board.
Well, so it's feasible to make Quarry Hill and the History Center?
No. I would not say that it's feasible. I would say it would be required action by two bodies to amend the-
So it's possible. That's what I'm there. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
Can I ask you a question? And so I want to go back to the contract. 2027, the contract is up. When do you anticipate renewing or looking at that? And would you do that a year out from that and go out for bids again? Is that how you would?
Right. So we would follow the city process and doing an RFP. Before we even issued the RFP, we'd come to the council to get approval to go out for RFPs. So there will be a process.
Would that be 12 to 18 months out, or?
Roughly, yes.
Is that a good estimate? So really, we can't break the contract at this moment?
Well, any contract is, there's terms of termination, so there is that option. But once again, it would take time because we can't do it in-house at this point in time. So there would be some kind of transition that would need it.
Okay.
If I may, I would just also point out that there is no firm data that says that this would be more cost-effective to bring it in-house. So that's a statement that's been made, but there's no firm data that says that it would be more cost-effective to bring it in-house. And that's something that we've tried to do with the budget, as described earlier today, is to try to be optimizing how we provide service in a way that is less impactful. And right now, we do not put property tax towards the transit system except for some of the bus stops.
And I would agree with that, and I'm not looking to change it, but at 2027 and then coming backwards to open up that contract. As far as this bus service that we'd like to get to the Stark Society and to Quarry Hill, I'm all in favor of that. Can we do that with a micro-transit system?
Yeah, I'm going to let Bradley address that.
Okay, thank you.
Because he's done a lot of work in it.
Councilmember Palmer, thanks for the question. Could we, I mean, sure. It's a question of where we prioritize service in the plan. The areas we focused on for a micro-transit pilot were in places where we're looking at reducing fixed route service because of low ridership, but there's still transit need. And so one area is in southeast, which is not near the History Center or Quarry Hill. And then the other is southwest, way south, kind of west of Target South, that area. So those are the areas we identified for potential pilots, but the question of if it's possible.
So if we had a city council that decided, four of us decided, that we'd like it to explore that and come back with a plan, that's something that's feasible for you to do?
I guess I'd refer to you. Yeah.
Yeah. So just to be clear, like you're saying set up priority for the transit plan to support transit there, however- transit there, however they achieve.
However they, however they, yes.
While you're up here, could you also just talk a little bit more about how you've assessed? I know Mr. Gannaway has been in contact for a year and a half now with this idea. So you've been part of the processes, just how it was evaluated and how you came with this recommendation as a starting point.
Sure. So I will talk to the budgeting piece of it, the funding, and then Bradley will talk about the planning piece of it and how that works. So as you may recall, I mean, we are enterprise fund, and so we, all the things that we do, operations and revenue is all retained within the transit fund. So we have to look at that and balance it. We get state and federal funding, and they evaluate our routes. If we do introduce a new route, we do have to apply for that for the state for approval. And then once we get that established, then we have to show ridership for that. So if we don't have enough ridership, then it needs to be evaluated. So there is that reiterate process of making sure that that route is sufficient because they do provide most of the funding for it. So the revenue that we get on these routes is what will then sustain that route. And then that's where I'll turn it over to Bradley.
So as far as the factors we looked at when looking at the probability of fixed route success, particularly, we're looking at population density, concentration of jobs, and then other activities, you know, medical, shopping, et cetera. And both the history center and the Corey Hill Nature Center are areas that are located somewhat far from dense population. I mean, particularly the Corey Hill Nature Center is out in the middle of a park and the road network, buses have to run on the roads we have. So the nature center is about a mile from any of our current routes, the roads it would take, there's not really housing along them for population to provide attract riders or other destinations. And then the road to get in there is a one-way road in and out, so there's the operational cost of that distance. We do have a route that is within what's generally considered walking distance within transit planning, that's Route 203. It has a stop within three-eighths of a mile. We could add a stop, that would be within about a quarter mile of a walk via walking paths. But right now, we don't have a route that goes right to the front door. For the history center, it's not quite as isolated, but it's in a similar type of situation where it's not in as dense of area with housing and population and doesn't have that many destinations next to it. So those are the things we looked at.
All right, so we have many more questions. Councilmember Keen?
Just to follow up on this discussion, I want to make sure we can talk about fixed routes. You're not talking about adding routes, you're talking about adding a stop on an existing route.
For Route 203 that goes out near the Corey Hill Nature Center, that would be adding a stop. The requests we were getting were to have service to the front door of the nature center, essentially. So that's what we looked at as far as what would the added distance be? What's the population around it? And then with the history center, we would look at either extending a current route or creating a new route, but it would likely be extending a current route.
And it's just the calculus you do there of saying that's an extra, because I think three, 14 goes within a half mile of the history center, but it would be-
I think it's about a mile.
It'd be a dead-end loop, it would be back and forth. Do you do the work such that that would take 12 minutes and it's going to add to the bus route?
Yep, those are the kind of things we look at. And then how often does the bus run? All that sort of stuff. What does our blocking look like?
Yeah. So again, just to clarify, both of these requests have been studied and they're, they don't rise to the level of the next things we should be doing for public transit?
I guess that type of policy question I'd put at your-
But it is not a policy question. It's like the process that you use, they just don't rise to the level.
In terms of like, where is their density of population, the factors that we looked at, they did not rise higher on the likelihood of transit success.
Right, right. Said differently, we don't have a policy that says there should be public transportation to any public building.
Yes, or attractions. Yeah, it's not a policy point that drove the development of the plan.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we-
Ah, ah, ah.
I'm not-
There are many people in front of you.
While he's talking.
Senior member.
Senior member.
Yeah, retiring members. The next in line.
That's right, I was just jumping the gun. So the thing that I heard that I just want to, because I am respectful of all the time you all have spent here tonight and want to support you advocating for an outcome that you want to see happen. When we walk back the timeline, 2027 is implementation of a new contract, it sounds like. We have to go, our contract ends in December of '26. Eight, 12 months for competitive bidding, so we'd be at December '25. So like, if we were to contemplate the future of the organization, that's a late '24 question? Like, I just want to make sure, so I'm hugely sympathetic, but I don't willy-nilly air up contracts because we're ultimately held responsible in legal court. So I'm not comfortable making that on the fly. But like, let's start to lay out, when can people expect to actually have a conversation about the future of the organization looks like? Is it the end of 2024?
Right. I think what we would do is, looking like your timeline going backwards, we would want to put out that RFP like a year ahead so that we can do that process award and then if needed, transition. So we need that time period. So looking back, and this is just kind of thinking out loud here, but if we were to do that RFP process, we would start looking at it the year before, so '25 is when we put out for bids, so '24 is when we start putting the plan together and coming to you, the council, in regards to the different options and the plans and the studies, and then making a recommendation on which path to move forward.
So I guess like, I'll share my perspective, which is only really impactful here for the next 30 days or so, but-
We don't have a motion, so.
Yeah, no, not about that, about the opening of the contract. Because I think there's a lot of people here, despite whether or not it's what we're here to talk about, that want to talk about the contract. Like barring non-performance of the contract, the city is going to be extremely hesitant to step away from a contract. We do not do that generally. It's part of maintaining a lot of our contractual basis that operates a city. So I haven't heard a whole lot tonight that is they're not performing. What I've heard is, we think there's a better arrangement, and that could be. I think we should, we have to be open-minded that there could be a better arrangement. But the time to address that is starting in '24. It's starting in fiscal year '24. It's not starting the end of fiscal year '22. Otherwise, we get into this, you can get into actually significant bad legal position that you're not negotiating in good faith if you're not. So anyway, I don't like that idea. Overall, I am open ears to the idea of this route modification to certain destinations, like, okay, like I kind of get that. I'm seriously concerned about jeopardizing any of our ongoing federal or state-level funding. So I think we have to make sure it still makes sense in those contexts. But other than that, I didn't see a lot in here that I needed a whole lot of correction. It seemed to be falling on the kind of trend we have. So other than that, do we need a motion?
Well, we have a couple more questions.
Oh, all right.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. So I guess I'm kind of along the lines of what you're saying, Mr. Campion. I'm looking at, this is a transit development plan that goes through 2027. We have routes that people are saying they want to add. Well, that would happen in a transit development plan. And then we also have, whether it saves us money or not, even if it's the same cost, we have folks that want to be incorporated into our city as a piece of what we do for our residents, businesses, visitors, patients. And their contract expires, or the contract that we have with First Transit that's going to become TransDev expires in 2026, which also falls within the window of a transit development plan. And when I hear that one of the performance measures is on-time performance, I'm thinking, well, yeah, that's pretty good for a bus company to have, but wow, wouldn't it be cool if a performance measure was public transit needs of Rochester's residents, patients, and businesses? That sounds a lot catchier to me. Meeting the needs of our ridership, those who want to ride versus just always being on time. I mean, yeah, we kind of want our buses to be on time, but-
Do you have a question?
Yeah, maybe. So with these dates, isn't it possible to put a couple of fixed routes or perhaps non-fixed routes to these places into a transit development plan and incorporating that timeline that Mr. Campion talked about of bringing our first eye to the public, our bus drivers, into the transit development plan to make them our own when their contract expires in 2026? Isn't that possible to put into the transit development plan?
Anything is possible.
Exactly.
Right. Was that a rhetorical question or a real question?
It was a real question. I mean, we don't want to rip up a contract. We want to be integrous people, a city. We want to honor what we've set to do. But what we're setting out to do with on-time performance, it's kind of like, it sort of negates really what we're trying to do here for the folks that are making public transit possible.
Yeah, I think Bradley has some comments too in regards to that. I would say as far as this plan goes, I think it's unique from previous plans in that it provides options. And it is to improve our services for, and to attract riders and to, you know, respond to the growth. The flexibility that we built in here hasn't been done before, where we have different options, as we're still trying to recover from COVID. So if you recall, one of the options is cost neutral. So if we don't have ridership coming back, how can we still implement our services to provide transit for those that do need it and depend on it while at the same time looking at our funding because we won't have any growth? But if we did have growth, then we have an expansion plan that would be put in place to, you know, respond to that. So there is some flexibility in that in regards to returning back from COVID because we are still recovering. We continue to see our increase in ridership, but we're still not quite there yet. And so we have to be flexible because we do have our cures and our funds to help us balance our shortfalls, but that's going to run out. And so we do need to look at our funding in regards to that.
All right, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Palmer, then Dennis, then Bransford.
Thank you. You're talking about how you determine, and one of them is the airport, and the density around the airport has got to be about zero, right?
Sure.
Okay. So if we think that it's good to go to the airport and we think it's good to go to the Stark Society, don't you think that we could probably balance that out?
Yeah, so I will say that, like, if, can't remember how, most of you have been here before, when the previous TDP was approved. And in that, one of the routes was Route 191, which is the crosstown going like in a circle around the city. And that was in response to the feedback that was received. So we did put that in operation, and there was very little ridership. So after a year and a half, and while COVID did hit, so we had to readjust, but we were starting to look and evaluate to see if we needed to make those changes because at the time, we could not sustain that. The reason why that route happened to occur was through funding. There was some funding available that was provided, and so we were able to do that. So once again, it goes back to the funding and the ridership. This plan is a guideline, not to say that it's set in stone. So if we put something in place and it doesn't work out, then we need to adjust. And if there's development that should occur within the five years that happened, you know, we need to adjust and provide services to it. So we need to be flexible, and that's what we're here for, is to continuously reevaluate our routes. So could it go there? We could. We could try something different. We could try not just micro-transit, but we could try route deviation. It's a different type of thing, type of service. So there's different ways to do that, but it's the funding that we also need to make sure that we have also for it.
Okay.
Can you, can we let the others ask questions?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dennis?
All right, thank you. So the famous saying, you know, if you want to look at someone's values, their priorities, you look at their check ledger. And I feel like funding our priorities is what we need to do as a city. And I appreciate the thoughts about equities and equity argument and cultural argument. When I look at your, your survey you did, it was non-low income, you know, you have $90,000, white, you have $80,000. I imagine, I'm just thinking many probably from Mayo, Mayo Clinic, but wouldn't we want to increase our connections to those who identify as other than white and more wealthy? I feel like this would be a good way of the cultural center, you know, having the history center and the Corey Hill, which impact also places of belonging and mental health, which mental health is an epidemic in our loneliness and sadness, and there's proven with nature and connections to each other, we could help with that. So my questions, well, first off, was that, is my assumption correct about Mayo being factored into this?
Are you asking about the Title VI analysis?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the Title VI analysis was not actually a survey, but it's a demographic analysis. And so we're looking at our current bus routes, what parts of town are they serving and who lives there? And then the proposed changes within the plan, how would that change those service areas?
Okay, so it wasn't necessarily looking at places of employment or anything like that, so?
Correct. And so what we're wanting to make sure is that if we're proposing changes to our service, we're not having disproportionate burdens or impacts on folks protected under the Civil Rights Act, that we're not giving folks who are unprotected under that way more service or that we're just making sure we're being equitable in how we're providing that fixed route service.
So a couple of thoughts. I just recently went traveling and-
Are there more questions?
This is a question, this is a question. The airport is incredibly used by Mayo. You walk into our airport and the entire thing is decorated in Mayo. Has that been looked at for having Mayo help fund somehow this expansion to include the airport? Because most, I imagine, large majority of the passengers will be patients.
So we typically do not reach out to Mayo for sponsorship of specific routes. We do have Mayo riders that, you know, purchase passes from us. So we don't, I mean, we haven't reached out to them in regards to the airport.
I think maybe that would be good to help save taxpayer money. But another partnership is at the NLC conference I attended. Cities use the school system, because I just heard from people in the audience here, which I value very much. I've ridden the bus service and so helpful. Me and my kids were lost and you guys are, drivers are phenomenal, because I had no idea. We called, anyway, short staff on the phones, but wonderful. But when it comes to innovative solutions of other cities and partnerships, they partner with the school district and use drivers interchangeably. Has that been looked at to help with the staff shortages partnering with another government entity?
Right. So once again, we contract with First Transit, and so they are the ones that hire the drivers and manage the shortages or the hiring part of it. And so we definitely talk to them to make sure that there's enough drivers out there and collaborate with them. So if they do need like additional resources to maybe advertise or whatnot, we certainly work with them on that. So there are different, like we don't do the hiring. And if we were to coordinate with RPS, Rochester Public Schools, that would be a totally separate contract that we'd have to negotiate with, which at this point in time, we really don't have.
And would you say if it was in-house, we could have more control over partnerships if, you know, looking at-
There might be some union-
Innovative solutions.
Ms. Alms?
Thank you. I would also just point out that we would want to make sure that the other partner, Rochester Public Schools, would be interested in actually partnering on something like that and that they would be comfortable having- would be interested in actually partnering on something like that and that they would be comfortable having their schoolchildren on those types of buses.
It's been a long time, but we, during my tenure, we looked at exactly this and decided not to do it.
All right, let's get a motion. Council President Carlson, can I? No, I'd like a motion and then we can continue on.
I have to read the packet again. I would move to adopt a resolution approving the 23 to 27 transit plan.
Second?
Can I turn it back?
I yield.
Go ahead. Sure, thank you, apologize. I just wanted to make, make a couple of comments as you think about your, and reflect on your vote. I think Ian Bradley addressed the issue about federal funding and the importance of this plan and our reliance on this plan to be the tool that we use to continue to get federal funding year after year to run this very important service for the city of Rochester. The question about measurements and key performance indicators is a great question. And it's a great, great comment that we make sure that we have a system that responds to the needs of our community. But I think it's important to note again that a lot of the measures that we look at specifically are driven by federal requirements to make sure that we are in compliance. And they're the things that the federal government looks for, so that's how we have those measurements. The last thing I want to talk about is the idea of bringing this in-house. And I, like all of you, agree that it's always good to take a fresh look from time to time. But just want to think about the timing of that. And so if you'll indulge me with Councilmember Campion's dates that he mentioned, this contract would be up in late 2026, so backing it off, it puts it at end of 2024. I would say that if you're, if you were to look at something in 2024 that has a cost implication, that is the budget process that we will be starting in the next couple of months. So January through March would be the time that we would be starting that budget process if there's a cost implication. Lastly, you know, Ian and Bradley, your team has spent a lot of time thinking about how strategically we move transit forward. Post-linked rapid transit, thinking about microtransit, thinking about building out a system once the BRT is up and running, that it's responsive. I think it's, would be putting a lot on this team to say at the same time that we are launching the largest infrastructure project in the city of Rochester by 2026, that you also want us to look at a contract and bringing that service in-house. I think that there are some strategies that we could do that could let us look at it sooner rather than later and not another five years after 2026. But I just want to call your attention that we'd be looking at this at the same time as we are trying to bring the link project.
Yeah.
Online to this community.
That's really helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I just, I think this is very valuable, having the public hearing on what the plan is to get these sort of ideas on other policy things we could have. I actually want to commend the staff team to keep within this funding model that 80% cover it and we're going to cover 20%. I appreciate the fact that we look at the routes that are both in the right areas to have ridership, but that also can keep us from having to, having to find new sources to run our buses. I would say one thing here, when our council starts getting into the thing of saying, well, we should offer this and we could vote and make it so, but I think we should at those same times talk about how we here are going to fund that versus putting it on to the people that are trying to run efficient public transportation. If we want to do some things that are public service, I think that takes us to the levy and it takes us to the point that we need to be funding that. And we're not stepping up to that right now, so I appreciate the work you're doing to keep us within the funding that we can get from other sources.
You, Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to amend the plan, and the motion is to review a route to the History Center.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And all I'm asking for is for them to review it and look at it. We took a lot of public comment on it. It's a destination I think is worth going to. It could add to the Mayo Clinic experience for our people downtown. They're spending about 10% of their time at the mayo. Again, though, I'm not a fan of, I'm not looking at putting property tax into, into this and I don't want us to go down that road. I am scared. Yeah, I listened to the Met Council and the Tribune today and they're talking about cutting back routes already and they're talking about extending their services from 15 minutes to a half hour because they're, and we are close. But we are unusual, though, that we have one employer that helps us out a lot.
Is this related to the amendment?
Yes, it just got done. That was my amendment.
Nailed it.
All right, other comments on the amendment? Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with an exploration of the idea with the end goal being, how much would it cost? How could we do it? Would it be just diverting a route? Would it be on demand, somebody gets on the bus and says, I want to go there, otherwise they don't? I don't know, and I don't want to problem solve that. But there's a lot of different ways we could cut and dice this. I just think before we, before we spend a lot of money or make any decisions, I just think adding that to the plan, whether it be now or the five-year plan, and just look at what the financial impact would be and the feasibility of it, I think that's a good idea. And that's all I would.
I would support that amendment only because I think they've already done all that work and could just provide it back to us.
At a study session. Sounds great.
Yeah, thank you. I really do support the idea of considering these sort of culturally important. Right, culturally important resources in our community. It's just, we have to always, always, it's our responsibility to balance that within the resource constrictions that we function within. And I know we have a pretty tight funding model for transportation and some recovery ahead of us. So appreciate if that is voted in affirmative.
I just need to clarify that there's no change to the adopting the resolution approving the transit plan. We're just asking for a separate action.
No, it will.
Well, let's make sure we know what it is because I had heard it as a separate action and now I heard it's part of the plan.
No, 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 the amendment was to review route to the History Center.
So we're not amending the plan, we're just amending the vote?
We're amending the motion.
I would.
The motion was to approve the plan, we're not changing the plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Direct staff to review this.
Well, I heard someone say add it to the plan and.
Councilmember Bransford spoke.
I said you could.
Okay.
But you're clear on the original motion. Okay, all right. Anybody else want to speak to the amendment? Otherwise. Councilmember Dennis.
So, okay, so help me out if I'm not doing this correctly with Robert's rules. But I would like to amend the amendment to direct staff to explore a route to the History Center and to Quarry Hill. Both, because if they're already exploring.
Is there a second? All right. You have to say it into the microphone.
Second.
All right, go ahead, Councilmember Dennis.
Because if you look at partnerships, I've, I talk to people at Quarry, directors of Quarry Hill often. And, I mean, they could maybe do a shuttle, you know, or something. There's different funding sources at play with Quarry Hill. But when I talked about mental health being an incredible need and youth not having things to do in this town, oh my goodness, I mean, like, I mean, I have kids and like, what do we do, you know, to connect and have places of belonging? And to allow youth to be able to connect, go skiing in the winter or go, you know, hiking in the summer, I think would be wonderful. And I think we could have innovative solutions, like I mentioned, the shuttle, you know, that we could lessen the burden of taxpayers. And I'm, I'm thinking Quarry Hill would love to partner to get more people having the experience of nature. So I think that that should be included in the motion. Amendment.
Can we vote on that amendment right away?
Let's do it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, the amendment to add or replace, are you comfortable with the replacement?
Sure, yes.
All right, of the History Center and Quarry Hill, review by staff, back to council. Okay?
Just clarification, if I get staff to kind of just assess, is this a three-hour request or is this a five? Just give me some sort of feeling what you think we just asked for.
You need to get the microphone in order to answer the question.
All right. Fair.
Looking at cost and feasibility, say five, five hours.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we're back to the original motion to approve the plan. Councilmember Patrick?
As amended.
As amended.
So I just have a question then. When, this is for Ms. Steinhouser. You had suggested that, you know, if we walk back that timeline that Mr. Campion and I were suggesting about bringing them in-house.
They've dispensed with the amendment. So if this is like a general question.
This is a.
The amendment was, we only did the first one.
Finish speaking, please.
A point of order, it takes priority.
Thank, yes, then say it. Thank you.
Okay. I only heard the vote on the amendment to the amendment, and if that is going to be a replacement, it has to be declared a replacement prior to the vote. It can't be done.
I said, Councilmember.
After the vote. Okay, where are we at? Just tell me what's.
I said, is this to vote on?
Just to, just to clarify, that we have the motion and then we got amended to be to add Quarry Hill to it. We just voted on it to do that.
Added Quarry Hill.
We added Quarry Hill and.
Said, can that be the replacement?
In the original motion, the second was add Quarry Hill and to do the History Center. So it was redundant, but.
I don't think we took, okay. I, as long as the body recognizes that the current motion is amended.
That's correct.
But it was not clear to me that we had dispensed with the actual amendment. So if that's what we're saying is done, then it's done.
No, I don't think we have. I don't think we've dispensed with it. Yeah, that's where I thought.
On the History Center amendment alone?
No, now, now it's been amended and now we need to vote on that. We just voted whether we would amend the motion. We didn't vote to approve it.
Fine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Anything else? Bransford, are you up?
I'm just.
I think I was finished because Mr. Campion called point of order and we honored that.
I don't have anything to say.
Sorry, go ahead. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you for. So my question was to Ms. Steinhouser. If we're working on this timeline, you had suggested, or perhaps it was you, Ms. Jeong, I think I pronounced your last name correctly. Okay, thank you. When, could you please advise on when we should bring this back to consider the contract ending and working on that timeline? When, when would we, when would the council work toward that goal if that's indeed what we wanted to do? Because I want to put it on my calendar. I think I would like for Ian and I to sit down with Wendy and talk through that. My, I wanted to make you aware that if you were looking at something in 2024, that budget preparation is starting Q1 of 2023. And then just thinking about the implications of trying to manage rolling out $143 million rapid transit project and at the same time making a huge shift to bringing everything in-house and all the due diligence that's associated with that in addition to going out for RFP. So I think I would, we will be coming in a transit update, I think in February, I believe. So we could make a presentation, we could include that in that presentation. Let us talk internally about what would make sense. Okay, awesome, thank you. And then if, if then in that first quarter of 2023, if it's just not feasible because of the workload and what you said previously, then when would that RFP be going out and would that be the next best time to discuss that? And that's. I wouldn't say the RFP goes out until there's some analysis of understanding cost implications to the city and bringing those forward. So, and that analysis, I mean, we have to think about what's the cost to do that analysis before you even go out for RFP because you want to know how you have to structure your RFP. So it really, truly the best time then is first quarter of 2023. So this will be coming to us and we'll be making choices for that.
I just feel like I need to clarify something. You're going to start your budget, your two-year budget process in 2023. What we would be bringing to you potentially is the cost for a contract for us to look at what all of the different models are and understand what the cost implications might be to the city. So the city council could then make a determination if you want us to continue to move forward with looking at bringing something in-house or if the information that you receive from that is sufficient. But that wouldn't be then going out to RFP for a contract. That still would not happen until 2025 or some.
Right, right.
Got it.
That's what I wanted to kind of clarify is what we could look for if we were going to ask for something like that. Thank you. Thanks.
Any other comments on the transit development plan that we have on the table?
And you've dispensed with that item a couple of minutes ago, so Wendy voted on it, correct?
I think we voted on the amended amendment a few minutes ago. We still have.
The amended motion.
Now we have the transit development plan as amended.
That's why we only allow amendments and amendments.
Okay. All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Jean-Carrie, thank you to everyone who came and participated and special to have an audience full of passionate people.
Love it.
All right.
Right. Well, that is it for our public hearings and we are moving on to reports and recommendations, which we have several of. And the transit participants an opportunity to exit. But welcome Joe Ward and his team up here to discuss the 2022 Experience Rochester annual update. Oh, and if anybody did find a phone lying around, please do turn that into the clerk.
So Council President, could I introduce this while they're getting ready?
Council's still in session.
We can't have you approach the dais in the middle of session, sorry. Well, we have like five to nine items left. No, 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 she can follow up another time. I'm sorry, it's inappropriate.
Council President, can I just introduce this item?
Oh, please do.
So while Joe's getting ready, although I think he's fairly ready, just, this is an item that comes before you every December and it's a look, a little bit of a look backwards for things that have been able to be accomplished in 2022 and then a look forward towards what the plans are for the operation of Experience Rochester and Mayo Civic Center in 2023. So with that, I would turn it over to Joe Ward.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. Nice to see you all again, Council President, members of council. Realize it's been a long evening, so a lot of you also know that I tend to have a few extra words. So I'll try not to have the extra words and have the ones that are to the point and that you're very interested in. So just glad to be here tonight. I really also want to, you know, thank our team for hanging in here tonight too, some of our team. So you have Angie Richards, who's the newest member of our team. Many of you may know her from her years at Ever Hospitality. She's our new Director of Sales or Vice President of Sales, sorry. Bill Baumberg, Vice President of Marketing, and Paul Jansen, the General Manager of the operations side of the Mayo Civic Center. Just there for any questions. It won't be part of this presentation, but if there are any questions that pertain to them or any feedback, they'd be glad, I'm sure, to, to address those. So really what we're going to just try to go through relatively quickly, just a little refresh on the organization. And as Ms. Elms said, just kind of a look at '22, what our finances look like and our outlook. And really, so for us, call these sort of some foundational pillars that we really focus on because of the responsibilities to the city, the taxpayer dollar and of course, being the city's building and such a tremendous asset and with so many responsibilities with that. First is the fiscal responsibility. And I say first, these are not like hierarchical, right? The reason they're linear up there is because we do look at those as all pillars. If one falls, they all fall. So fiscal responsibility, campus management, and operations, economic impact, and then the community focus. As you know, or maybe as many of you know, maybe not everyone in the community, our contract with the city took place on January 1st of 2020. So two months later, three months later, we had this pandemic coming. So as we've developed as a new organization, we're still developing those pillars. And I think that some days, one's in balance more than the other and vice versa. But I think that you'll see and I hope that you see and have confidence that we're taking our responsibility seriously and we're moving forward as directed by the city. So just as a look at 2022, we had $5.1 million in contracted revenue. And 37, just so you give a little context, 37,722 hotel room nights contracted by the Mayo Civic Center team. Angie and her team and prior to her, Nick Landry, really pushing on getting multi-year group booking commitments instead of just. contracted by the Mayo Civic Center team. Um, Angie and her team, and prior to her, Nick Landry, really pushing on getting multi-year group booking commitments instead of just saying, we're going to have you for one year, but try to get them, let's say, um, a package that may be two years or every other year, um, going forward. So we can have a good base of business that you can plan around, plan expenses around, plan revenue around in hotels and restaurants can plan on as well. Um, continuing to evolve the one-roof partnership with Rochester Art Center and Rochester Civic Theater. I think that that has really been coming into its own lately where we're able to know the areas we can help them the most, and I think that they know where they can lean on us. Um, we'll get too much into that, but I think, that's just really been good. Paul, in particular, has taken that to the next level since he came on board with us, uh, to really work and make sure that everyone's taken care of. And then really working on those relationships with event promoters and meeting planners. Coming out of the pandemic, um, obviously, people were wondering, are people ever going to meet again? And the answer is thankfully, a resounding yes. Um, so one thing that we did during the pandemic, though, and I say, I realize the pandemic's not over for the record, but closures hopefully are, and they're all in our rearview mirror. Um, but as we continue to invest in sales and in developing those relationships, we felt that maybe they weren't, they weren't as solid as they could have been when the Mayo Civic Center was expanded. So we got into, we stayed in touch with people, and those have been continuing to be cultivated uh, to this day, and there's been tremendous results in 2022. So for instance, um, through November, the sales team is exceeding their year-to-date MCC revenue booking goals by 20%. So that's $849,000, uh, and our hotel room night booking goal by 8%. So an additional 2,937 room nights then was their goal. We hosted nine citywide conventions in 2022. So if you think about that, one just about every month, almost. Heading into 23, we have 14 citywide conventions, um, booked. So more than one a month. So we're excited about that. And honestly, our 2024 year looks better than 2023. So, but we'll pause on 23, or 22 and 23. I won't read, uh, Ms. Natalie Victorias, all of her comments in the interest of time, but just a nice comment that she had reached out and, uh, and sent us an email in regards to the United Hardware Conferences, which we hosted two of last year. And thanks to our sales team for bringing those in um, in short notice as well, and to the community for hosting those event, that, those, uh, folks from those, that organization. And then live entertainment. So I can proudly, I guess, announce that Rochester has become really a first-run destination for live, for comedy. So we've had just about any of the top 10 comics over the last couple of years. So we've had, um, Nate Bargatze, Jim Gaffigan, um, Tom Segura, we have Jim, is it Joe? Jim or Joe? Gatto? Joe Gatto coming in the spring. So, and people in Rochester are buying those tickets. Those shows are selling out like crazy. So it's really great to see, um, people supporting that programming. And, uh, and then, I would just say, so we also had, in this picture, you have REO Speedwagon, which goes back to my days. That was a sold-out show in our auditorium. Um, Martina McBride and Travis Tritt, who all were at the Mayo Civic Center, uh, in 2022. And again, here's a little emphasis on comedy. Uh, Bill will laugh at me because I could have just waited one slide to know it's Joe and not Jim Gatto, but there we go. Um, anyway. So just some of the folks that had come over the last couple of years. And I think this next photo that we have here, really, really proud of this because this was the second year of the Night Market, um, working with Tiffany Alexandria and her great goal and her great dream of, um, bringing BIPOC businesses together and people to really be able to get out and show off their wares and have an entryway into potentially, um, having their own business. Um, the first year was on the, um, South Patio, and then this year, and we appreciate the help from the city, um, to make this work to where we could open up the street out in front of Mayo Civic Center and enjoy and have, have that festival. So community engagement is really a part of it that even, you know, ourselves, I think it was, let's say, the, the closure timeframe of the pandemic was challenging, but in some ways it was easy for us to identify how we could really be there for the community, right? Aaron Parrish and team called and said, hey, can you do a homeless shelter? And those things obviously made sense. Can we do a vaccine, you know, clinic? Those made complete sense. Um, you know, can we be there for the Boys and Girls Club and 10 other charities when they're looking for distance learning? Yes, absolutely. But some, but as we reopen, it was a little more difficult to say, all right, how can we really be there in a really meaningful way? And I would say that I think some of that's still in involvement or in development. But the Night Market is a good example. I know Angie doesn't have this today, sorry. But we'll, we will have this, where we're working on a policy of actually being able to quantify some of the amount of business inside the building of what it really looks like to be, uh, what is a community group? How much of a community group focus can we actually commit to? Because the good thing is, the busier that we're getting with these higher-paying groups, it allows us on those free dates that we do have, the available dates, not free, um, to actually be there for local groups and say, okay, guess what? We don't need to be as financially focused with them because it's been secured through this new, um, contract, the new system that you set up just a couple of years ago. So I think for us, it begins with civic responsibility this year. So we engaged again with the Night Market, but Boys and Girls Chili Challenge we had. Um, then really one of the great highlights was working with the Police Department and hosting skate city nights, indoor roller skating. And then, uh, worked with local food and beverage vendors for the first time at Down by the Riverside. Um, and that was terrific. Initiated a new program, sorry, I keep jumping ahead because I'm hitting this. Um, initiated a new program to work with local nonprofits, provide additional staffing in our concession stands. So that was a real win-win because we all know about the labor challenges out there now, and just got organized about it and called local not-for-profits and said, hey, can you fill in at a comedy show? Can you fill in at a concert? They're able to get something for their organization. We're able to take care of our consumer, and, uh, it's just been really terrific, and we're going to continue to, um, evolve that and grow it as we move forward. And hopefully, as we get busier, there's even more of a demand, um, for that. And that's just a look at some of the groups and some of the people that we've had from the community side. Um, I know that Alison and I have had quite a few discussions on sort of starting to really look at how, how can we quantify that? So it is sort of a, a way when you come back and say, do we want to work with these guys in the future when that first five-year contract is up? You can say, uh, you know what? Yeah, let's look at that. And instead of saying, do the buses run on time or this or that? It's more, um, you know, are they succeeding in those goals? The other ones, when you look at fiscal responsibility and those things that we have, they're, they're kind of easier to identify because they're, they're numbers. And you can always like, yep, they did it or they didn't. Community engagement's going to take us working all together to continue to say, what does the community need? And how can we deliver that for you in your facility? So I look back just at the numbers. A year ago, I was here saying that we were going to be short close half a million dollars, and we were actually still excited about that because we, we were still wearing masks and we weren't sure who was coming back. And I said, we're going to work really hard to try to make sure that number is a little lower, is, is not quite as bad, and it's, uh, closer to zero, and maybe we'll get to zero. Well, we didn't get to, to zero break even, but we did get to a net loss when you do the, uh, work from the net income as well as the city contract of $264,000. So, um, and then, as you know, that the city had cut back the $200,000 over the pandemic years. So feel that we're really, really moving, really moving, um, working strides towards that original goal that was set forth by council a few years ago, uh, to make sure that it's a much more fiscally responsible facility and one that can, uh, that you can plan on and plan around that these are the dollars it's going to take to operate that facility. So we're very excited about that. I think, so as we head into 23, um, I was cautiously optimistic when I put this together last week that we were going to have the $3.8 million back. I believe that that passed earlier, so we appreciate that very much because that does, uh, that certainly does help in an area of rising costs. Uh, and then, um, so you'll just kind of see where that is. The revenue total, $8.8 million, and then expenses, projecting expense total of $9 million. So, um, so therefore, this point, projecting still a loss of $274,000. Um, but one that again, we certainly would work to, gets to zero, and if we did what we did this year, maybe you're looking at something that's like $100, $100,000. And I think, um, you know, the reality is we don't, I, I've said this a lot of times, we don't want to be making our goals on the backs of people in the community. And so we're really trying to balance keeping the place open and accessible while also knowing that some people out there in these conventions that Angie and her team are bringing in are going to pay, you know, pull the full ticket price. So, um, just, um, and then just a quick look ahead to 2023. As I've said a few times, the sales pipeline is very strong. Um, we do see finally the return of the Christian Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses Annual Conference, which a lot of people have been asking for for many years, and when are they going to come back, particularly those that sell suits and ties in the community? Um, so we're glad to have them back. They, um, they will be back next year. United Hardware returns one, one event this year, not two, but we're really glad that we seem to be a bit on their rotating schedule and hope to, uh, continue to be so. Um, certainly projecting higher in-person conference attendance, and that is a national trend right now. People really are meeting. A lot of relationships were forged prior to the pandemic. Everyone was worried nobody was ever going to meet again. And then guess what? People are wanting to meet again because it's the great reconnection that we're seeing. And just, uh, people know that if they want to do business and they want to grow, they need to get back together again. So we're glad Rochester is a, a venue of choice and a community of choice. More community-driven programming, so we're just going to keep moving with that again to, so for instance, um, will we, in a second here, I will mention that, the community-driven programming being Celebrate Rochester New Year's Eve. So please, if you don't have New Year's Eve plans, um, we are trying to be creating something this year to, uh, celebrate the new year with people. This is a free event, um, that people can come, and it is still a fiscally responsible event. The food will not be free, the, uh, but it is a free event for anyone to come in, and there are VIP tables and things like that. But we wanted to make sure it was open and accessible to the entire community, uh, that there's a, a wide range of local and regional music. The event starts at 10:00 AM, or no, 2:00 PM, I believe, uh, 2:00.
Yeah.
And there's a kid ball, ball drop or some form of celebration at 5:00 PM for kids. So the daytime activities are family and, um, around 8:00 o'clock, it starts to transfer over to more of a traditional New Year's Eve. There's one of the things that I was hearing from the moment I got here is Rochester needs, needs something. And then this is really something that, um, Bill and I will occasionally walk around and just go see a business or go to lunch. And, uh, we were just talking about some of the recent closures in restaurants and, um, and understanding that maybe there's something that we could do about it from sort of the destination marketing side. And so we brainstormed and created Ro- Rochester Restaurant Week. So your first, your first, first Rochester Restaurant Week will be January 16th through the 22nd. Right now, we have about 22 or 23 restaurants on board, hope to get about 10, 15 more. Just another great way to, um, encourage people to get out, to support their restaurants, um, and of course, um, associated retail and such downtown or throughout the city. It's not just a downtown-focused event. And we really want people to do that, and hopefully, just that little bit in a slow period of time will, uh, will help them. And I think it's also another great way for us to highlight and tell their stories. So as far as I'm concerned there, I certainly had lots of notes and things, but as I said, it's a late night, so just wanted to kind of try to keep it to the point. But if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer and glad to address.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, for, for your presentation, for your comments, and for achieving, overachieving on your goals.
Well, thank you.
It is still a loss, and I know we have some hard work to do to keep going and improving, but it's nice to see that things are moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Questions?
Comment? Just thank you, Mr. Ward, and your team. You're doing a great job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on. I know some are, they were planning on watching this. I'm not sure if they're sitting right this moment, but, uh, we appreciate that.
Most importantly, thanks to your team who had to just sit during the presentation. They're sitting here for five hours.
I saw the, I did, I have to say, I did see your look when I said that, like, they're not going to be part of this.
It's a tough draw.
They are a huge part of this. Uh, Angie just joined us a couple of months ago, right from like, and I said, you know, Angie, it's actually the latest city council meeting I've ever actually had to present at. So welcome to the team.
So do we want a formal motion to accept, receive and accept? Okay. I, I had a question. Go ahead.
Okay, my question, um, you, to make it more accessible to everyone, um, how are you doing that? Uh, because I feel, um, there's some kind of unclear, you know, like, how can people go to some of these events? Um, because some of them are pretty pricey.
Sure.
Um, I'm just going to lead into it. So this weekend, my children and I went to a couple events at the Civic Center, and one event, I was in Northern Lights, the lady, a wonderful person taking tickets. She says, so do you have a code? Do you have, you know, you know, the code you have? And like, she was like trying to prompt that there must be somebody having a lot of codes out there. And I'm like, I don't have a code. I'm going to pay the full amount. Um, and she's like, well, are you a Mayo employee? And she gave me all these things that had discounts. And, um, so how are those codes? You know, like, are, are those, um, I mean, for promotions, are they going to reach out to the community? Because they were pretty pricey tickets.
Sure. So I'm not sure specifically what codes the particular person you were talking about, but typically, if there's a, a concert, there may be a pre-sale code that if you're a fan, member of a fan club for a particular promoter or for a, you know, particular act, you'll be able to buy tickets, uh, a day or two ahead of time. They're usually not really discount codes. They're more, just early access codes these days, but occasionally they can be discounts. Now, as far as like to your first part of the question, how are we doing that? I think part of how we're doing that are things like the New Year's Eve celebration, right? We realize like some events, if you bring in a comedian of, let's say, Jim Gaffigan stature, which we had for two shows, the talent fee on a show like that is $150,000, you know, for each show. They don't give you a break because you're having two in one night. Um, so those have to be paid for. And if I came in here and said, you know, we have 20 shows and they each cost us, you know, $300,000 in debt, you're probably not going to want me representing Rochester very long. But I think in this case, we're trying to develop programming and also host it that can be affordable, if not free. So Night Market being one, that I think I can almost guarantee you that prior to 2019, um, it's probably not an event that would have found a home, the Mayo Civic Center. We prioritize that, and we believe it's really important. And I do think that we also have budgets for, you know, shows at all budgets, and unfortunately, the way the dynamics work in concerts and things is when someone's super popular, their price is super high, and when they're not as popular, the price is low. So typically, sure, the things that may be lower are oftentimes not the number one thing that everybody wants to go to. But that is why we're trying to add something like New Year's Eve where it's like, this is an organization. It's, it's our whole team. And I will tell you this event, when you come, our entire team worked on this for months to actually coordinate and get together because they really want to give it back to the community and use their talents to do so. And often, they just get a chance to help other people's like visions come true. And in this case, it can be theirs. So.
I, I guess, and one maybe, um, thought was, so the circus, um, Christmas circus that you had at the Civic Center, which was wonderful. The, I don't want to call them nosebleeds section, but the section that's way up there
Yeah.
were totally empty. You know, they're like just empty seats.
Yeah.
And I was like, this is a really fun kid performance. There are so many, um, uh, kids who are struggling with finances and situations. If there's any way of, um, at, you know, right before the performance, to just give those tickets away, find, you know, organizations that can fill those seats because it wouldn't cost Civic Center anymore, uh, to, you know, have packed audience versus half a, half an audience.
Sure. It's a good que, it's a good question. And I think when I started, and I didn't have as much live entertainment booking experience, I probably wished we could do some of those things that, like you're saying, more often. The reality of those is that there's, there's promoters that we work with, and everything is contingent on an agreement that we have with promoters, very similar to some of the contracts that you've discussed. So only with promoter permission. Those are not shows that we quote-unquote buy. And what I mean by that is if we buy a show, the risk is 100% ours. So we may, if we're going to, like I said, use the Jim Gaffigan, um, example, maybe I shouldn't be saying his name and his price, but a famous comedian for $150,000, and if we bought that, we're taking 100% of that risk. Whereas if we work with some of the promoters we work with, if it's one promoter, it's split 50/50. If it's two promoters, it's two other promoters, it's, you know, a third, a third, a third, a third. And that's how you can minimize the risk. So when you have those partners involved, they're not big fans of giving away product, just about anything. The last, because if they hear, like, if you think about it, I mean, people hear that there's 100 tickets for every show available on Saturday, you know, the day of the show, then guess what? In the future, people are going to wait, um, just wait for those free tickets. So, um, I wish, you know, in those, we could just stand up front and say, hey, whoever just walks by, come on in, and maybe we'll surprise people, be able to do that. So Paul, hopefully you're listening back there. This year, we'll figure out a way to do that a little more often. I think it's a great point. I do think it's a great point, sincerely. Uh, I think we'll find more ways to do that.
No, I just see some of your, your partners, like, you know, having a whole bunch on hand for the women's shelter or, you know, uh, not necessarily hand them out, but I just feel that there are so many experiences that many cannot participate in. And if you have the ability, um, that doesn't break any, you know, rules. I think we could really build more partners and really help people in need in our city. So just an idea, if that could be a possibility. Thank you.
Let's remember, Kina, do you have a question?
Uh, uh, more of a comment, and then just on the.
Could you, could you just make a motion?
Um, yeah, I'll make the motion to, uh, receive and file the Experience Rochester Corporation Year Review and approve the 2023 budget for Experience Rochester.
Thank you. I just, we're getting into comments.
Sure, sure. No, no, my, yeah, and it is my comment. Again, I really appreciate how you, you talked about the four pillars. I, I, I'm impressed when I think about the last two years with the COVID and kind of holding back, and the way we did kind of get some things going in there, uh, and kind of more in survival mode, I would call it. But in this tail end and now coming out, and I think we are out of pandemic, we're not out of COVID, but we're out of pandemic. Um, I, I think I have been pleased with some of the community things, like just walking downtown a couple of weeks ago. I think I have been pleased with some of the community things like just walking downtown a couple of weeks ago. You could go right into the Skyway through the Civic and there was the Mayo Employees Craft Sale. And I don't know where that would be if it weren't there. And it took a lot more space than I thought. And that's the kind of stuff that I really like to, that's the civic in the Mayo Civic. And I like to see that coming about because that's what I think was really missing in years gone by.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I appreciate that very much. We, I think I've used the phrase last year and used it a lot, which is keeping the civic in the Civic Center. And, you know, it, it is an interesting balance. I went through and looked at every council meeting that you, you all had when you were deciding on this format. And it's not an easy, you know, model to figure out. It certainly isn't, you know, Angie wants to charge full price to everybody. She's a salesperson. But the reality is, is where we can find that balance. So you know that we're being responsible to, it's, it's a large building. It's a large asset. You just put, you know, the city just put 80 some million dollars into it shortly before the pandemic. You should demand that out of us and it's also the people's building. So we have to find a way to get them more involved. And I think that that's something we still need. That's the pillar that I think we still need to grow at, to find out like, what's a way that you can really sit here and go the end of the year? Like, did you really do it or not? Because you can show me a couple of shows, but did you really do it or not? And I think that's part of the fact that Angie's really working on is to put that into an actual goal within our sales team that can be quantifiable. So you can look back and say, yes, you did or you didn't do it.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you very much.
We'll vote and.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Oh, did you want to come?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, guys.
Ms. Corcoran.
Thank you, Council President Carlson and Councilmembers, Administrator Zolms. Before your, this morning, I think, this morning.
First item of the day.
Yeah. Didn't think I would be saying that. You have two items for your consideration to adopt, the legislative priorities. You'll remember, we discussed this two weeks ago in the study session on November 24th, first. And then also a resolution supporting the local sales tax authorization that we need from the state legislature. We had a robust conversation before, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Campion.
Yeah, my feedback is I did a great job of articulating a bunch of points at the study session. And I'm glad to hear that they're still working their way into the final legislation. I think this all looks really important to us. And I'm expecting another excellent year of legislative action up out of the Capitol and hope with maybe a little bit of momentum, we can get some stuff done this year. So appreciate all the work you put into it. Thanks.
Absolutely.
He said.
Yeah. Any comments?
Just a question. I know there was some feedback on more language on defining the sports complex. Is, has there been any thoughts since the study session on having more clear, I don't know, just description?
But Councilmember Dennis, that was the item that you pulled from consent that was a request for proposals that we would put out for a process in order to conduct more feedback from the community through some co-design and some other initiatives that, so that will be coming forward now after.
It'll be right after this one. F9.
Yeah, okay. I was, I was told that staff was not going to stay around for answering those questions. So, okay, thank you. Never mind then.
Ms. Corcoran is here to present this item. So that's why she's here.
Call the court.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
What ever happened to Silver Lake? The question was about Silver Lake, previous bondage package priority. Yeah. We considered that through the, if you'll remember that process diagram, so during the summer when teammates got together and department leaders and relied on our legislative working group, which made up of some of the members here, looking at what makes a successful bonding project, thinking about other work related to that specific site that had been recently done with the Park Master Plan and wanting there to be some more work done locally around the vision of that master plan and getting consensus, I think was the direction that we're going.
Okay. Thank you. All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Yes, and thank you for all your work to get us to where we are today.
Good morning. I like that.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Have a good day. So Councilmember Dennis, you have the next three items. How would you like to proceed?
Well, I think it might be good just to take a quick break to stand and stretch because it's past midnight.
All right.
Motion is forward.
All right, so 12:15.
We can't start without her. She pulled them.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
So I polled F9 based on the need that people have their voices heard. And there was a resident who brought up F9. And I felt if there's concerns, I talked to her ahead of time. I mean, I did not know she was going to mention it, but I talked to her. And there is some thoughts on why, how are we doing these competitive bids? And what do we, are going to, you know, spending this kind of money? Can't we do this more internally? So I polled it because every bit of taxpayer money is important to, to account for. So I, yeah.
Mr. Parrish, go ahead.
Yeah, President of the Council, just very briefly, this is a request for proposals. So it is a competitive process where all firms have the opportunity to provide a proposal. I mean, you're not acting on those proposals this evening. You're really just authorizing us to go get them and then ultimately bring a recommendation back for you to consider for approval. What this is going to do for you is give you the opportunity to have an engagement process around the regional sports and recreation complex. That's one of the anchoring local sales, old option sales tax proposals. It'll do a gap analysis, which again, you know, some of this is community collaboration work. Some of this has some professional expertise on, that we don't currently have on our team. So it's helpful to contract. And we do expect this to be somewhat of a robust effort. So with that gap analysis, it'll help us to identify specific project features. We have sort of an outline that's been architected, but we want to better understand that. It'll evaluate some of our existing partnerships, operating models, you know, certainly one way to operate this. You heard about a public model tonight, a contracted model tonight in a different area of service. This will give us some insights into what the options are here in that space. And then lastly, it'll give us a concept design. It won't identify a specific site because we don't know what the program is yet and what the acreage needs are and some of the specific criteria. But it will give us a concept and site criteria when we're done. We would expect this work to take us through about May and be able to have a good, you know, decision in terms of what this complex wants to be at that point in time.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, I want to move to authorize a second solicitation of bids.
All right, Councilmember Keane.
Yeah, I think this is, this was discussed and verbally approved through a working session within the last month, I think. So again, I want to get the work going.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Back to you, Councilmember Dennis. F12.
F12. This, we received email from residents of council that brought to attention some accessibility needs. And I talked to County Commissioner and it looks like a good proposal on the end of, what, you know, for, for getting housing funding. But when it has accessibility issues, I feel it needs to be addressed to see if that can be remedied prior to approval.
What exact accessibility issues do you want remedied before approval?
Well, to make sure that all the housing units, so that everyone with all ability can have access to housing here in Rochester. So I, I haven't gone in depth in the three-page email that was sent to everyone on council. But I feel that having this much work put into fighting to make sure that everyone has access needs to be addressed prior to approving this.
Councilmember Campion.
This is for funding for the Coalition for Rochester Area Housing. And I'll just say like, we're a member of the coalition. So it's important that we internalize that and decide as a group what we want to make as our priorities and then return to them as a partner organization of three that fund it and represent that. I actually don't know that it would change substantially the way that this is worded, even if we agreed with that, like this is the funding request for next year. And as we set priorities, I think we can integrate that into the discussions we have in that context. Whoever is going to represent us on that group next year. But I will say, I do want to call out in particular, Jewelry has been here all night as the executive director of that. And I appreciate that. I think the main thing here is there's not really a huge deviation from our planned funding, except for this $50,000 in contingency, which was needed to cover a shortfall that was kind of unforeseen based on some staffing requirements. Coming out of contingency, I have been sitting with them and digging into this for a while. I wholly support this funding. It helps us bootstrap the kind of initial hires. And I think critical to getting that kind of staff support to support that organization. So I would recommend approval. I'm going to move approval and then.
Second.
All right, back to you.
I'm going to just pretend that I did that in reverse order and we can just move on.
All right, perfect. Other discussion?
So I would like, I mean, in the future, some of these concerns from the citizen who sent this concern, I feel maybe more outreach should be done to address this, so that, that understanding and that, you know, I said that she's not here to, to elaborate a little bit more. But I feel we often overlook people who have special needs. And because it, when we don't look through that lens, it's hard to, to be accommodating. So we need more people who are on teams to give their lived experiences. So I just, I mean, I'm a big supporter. I go to many of the meetings. And I think we have a housing crisis. So of course, I am in support of this as well. I just feel in the future, we could do better to make sure things are accessible.
Council President.
Yeah.
Just briefly, I would just recognize and it'd be remiss if, if we didn't recognize that Ms. Harden did have the ear of the folks involved in, in this project and had a full opportunity to talk through all of her concerns and voice her advocacy in, in her own words. That happened.
Yes. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I didn't vote because I had my hand up because I had a question.
Can you talk about it during other business? Would it change your vote?
No, it wouldn't change my vote. So I'm curious about the logistics of this thing here quickly. We can do it later.
Or follow up by email. Thank you. So motion carries, 7-0. Right, F14.
And so to clarify my, my confusion, we received an email from the administrator. So it listed that staff was not going to be present. So I just, some of these questions, I thought having staff present would be, would be good to have expert, knowledge. This, I just, I don't know why we would pass this prior to the reports and recommendations. Because, I mean, questions to ask Mayo Civic, Civic Center would be why they need this extra money. The $60,000 above and beyond of taxpayer money. And if they didn't have this, I would like to ask, what would they have to give up? Because this would be like it just says, above and beyond the budgeted amounts already allocated. So I just wanted to ask, what, what is needed? What would, you know, do we really, is it a need or is it a want?
Go ahead, Ms. Zolms.
Council President, as you can see, I am the presenter of this item. It's listed very clearly on the RCA. And so the request for $60,000 was based on review of the actual costs for the first year of operation. There are some items that came in below cost, but there are a number of items that came in above cost. And so just to clarify, the one roof agreement is not just the Civic Center that is involved in that. It actually serves the Art Center and the Civic Theater, two of the partners. So primarily the costs that are overage there is related to security, which is not just about having somebody at a front desk, but it's about securing the building, opening it and closing it and making sure when there's different activities at those different areas that they're staffing to do so. And so when this came forward in April of 2021, it was made very clear at that time and actually included in the council's motion that we would review that, understanding that there might be a cost overrun to that because we had taken simply dollars from the Civic Theater and dollars from the Art Center that they had been intended to put towards the maintenance and operation of the facility. And there's perhaps somewhat arbitrarily a $357,000 mark there. They mentioned during last December's report to the city council that they were concerned that that was part of their cost overrun. So what would happen is that they would be further in the red and have more challenges being able to book events and fulfill the needs not only of the Civic Center, but also the Civic Theater and the Art Center who are now primarily funded for their mission-driven programming from the city because they don't have to take this on. So when you see the $267,000 shortfall at the end of 2022 that's predicted for the Civic Center, 200,000 of that arguably is because the city pulled back some of the funding that's in our contract and they agreed to do so. That was $3.6 million versus 3.8. And the other 60,000 is directly related to the one roof project, which is all explained in the council action.
So I would like in the future, for when we are doing budgeting, to have each department come in front of council. Because to hear it from you is, it's good, but I feel we're the ones who sign our, our names with a vote. And I would like more transparency. It's not just for, for us to have a better understanding of where every dollar goes, but also for the citizens to have transparency because these proceedings are recorded. They're on TV, on, on the internet. And so for the citizens of Rochester to see each department of the city come before the council would I think help alleviate some concerns about taxpayer dollars and.
Experience Rochester is not a department of the city.
Well, I'm just saying, this, this, the details on why more taxpayer money is needed, I would like to see have be presented by the actual people who are, who are requesting it.
I'm requesting it. I'm the presenter. Thank you.
Councilmember Keane.
Yeah, I want to move to authorize the use of contingency funds and $60K for this event.
Second.
Again, the one roof thing I think has gone better than I had thought it might. I was worried about this. And the fact that we're only talking about 60K here difference, at the end of the year with contingency money we have, I think reflects well. I'm going to add this, I do still worry about Experience Rochester and this sort of arrangement coming, you know, when you picture them coming in in January of 2020, I mean, at what point would they say this isn't working out? And we're going to be back with a, with a bigger problem. So the fact that we're trying to work with them and make sure they get through these lean parts and then get to be what they're good at, I think is the right business move for the city.
Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Right. Wrong document, but I think it's Michael Spindler Craig's turn.
You are correct, Madam President. Your honors, there are two first readings. J1, an ordinance creating section 60.500.050D, creating subparagraph F of paragraph four of clause C of section 60.200.040C, amending subparagraph D of paragraph four of clause C of section 60.200.040C, amending table 500.01-1 of clause B of section 60.500.010, and amending title of section 60.500. An amending title of section six, zero point five, zero, zero point zero five, zero of the Unified Development Code. Moving on to J two, paragraph A, an ordinance amending paragraph A of section nine dash five dash one and amending sections nine dash five dash two and nine dash five dash three of chapter nine dash five of Title Nine of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to sidewalk, driveway and curb and gutter construction and repair. Paragraph B, an ordinance amending sections nine dash six dash four through nine dash six dash six of chapter nine dash six of Title Nine of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to sidewalk and repair maintenance. Paragraph C, an ordinance creating and enacting chapter nine dash six point one of Title Nine of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to sidewalk improvement, district and repair maintenance.
Thanks for reading those into the record. Moving on to second readings.
Second readings, there are three second readings, starting with K one. Ordinance rezoning approximately fifteen point zero five acres of land from M two industrial to the M one commercial industrial and amending ordinance number two, seven, eight, five, known as the zoning ordinance and land development manual of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
Move approval, second.
Councilmember.
Nothing to add.
Any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
K two, an ordinance amending section eight dash eight dash ten of chapter eight dash eight of Title Eight of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to juvenile curfew.
Move adoption, second.
Uh, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
K three, an ordinance creating section two dash one dash two of chapter two dash one of Title Two of the Rochester Code of Ordinances establishing fees and charges for licenses, permits, services and other charges provided by the City of Rochester.
Move adoption, second.
Councilmember Campion?
Nothing to add.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Spindler-Craig. Oh, he still has another. No, you're good.
You scared him.
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any other business tonight?
Adjournment.
I have other business. I have some other business. Move adjournment takes priority. Is there a second?
Second.
I, I have other business that I have to address from. Sorry, we, there's no discussion for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Motion carries, five, one, one. The residents' voices need to be heard.
Recording stopped.
And this is not.